Board members, please take your seats. This November fourteenth, two thousand and twenty-four regular meeting of the Fairfax County School Board will now come to order. Please stand for the presentation of colors by the Chantilly Academy Air Force Junior ROTC Color Guard, the pledge of allegiance followed by a moment of silence and a performance of the National Anthem by the Sherman Elementary School Six Gate Choir under the direction of Diana Novellas.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic, the Constitution, one nation, on the ground, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
While they can still hear us, can we hear another round of applause for those amazingly talented students? Agenda item two point zero two announcements. If you would like to review a copy of the meeting agenda, please see the back of the auditorium. To obtain copies of any items or supporting materials being presented tonight, please reference the QR code on the agenda or visit www.fcpss.edu/boarddocs. Tonight's meeting is being broadcast on Channel ninety-nine and livestreamed on YouTube and our website at www.fcpss.edu/livestream. Agenda item two point zero three, remarks by Dr. Patillo, Virginia School Boards Association President. I call on Ms. Maron, our Virginia School Boards Association representative and vice chair of the VSBA's Northeastern Region for an introduction.
Thank you Chair Frisch. I did just want to check if you did want to welcome Mr. McDaniel in virtually. No? Sorry, my bad. Thank you. Good evening. Tonight, the Fairfax County School Board is delighted to welcome our colleague from the Portsmouth City School Board, Dr. Cardell Patillo, who serves as the president of the Virginia School Boards Association. Dr. Patillo is visiting FCPs on his twenty-fifth and final stop of his VSBA's president's roadshow over the past year across Virginia. Earlier this evening, Dr. Patillo attended our Purple Star Schools reception and celebrated our division's commitment to military-connected students and their families. Dr. Patillo, thank you for your service and advocacy for public education. Our school board is looking forward to the VSBA convention next week, and we appreciate VSBA's support for school boards in Virginia. I now invite Dr. Patillo to address the board from the podium.
I know that you all have a packed agenda on tonight, so I won't be before you too long, but I promise to have you home in time for the eleven o'clock news. But no, you have great recognitions that are happening on tonight, so as the great Elizabeth Taylor once told her fifth husband, Mike Todd, "I won't keep you long." To the members of the Fairfax County Public School Board, Chair Mr. Frisch, Vice Chair Dr. Anderson, Superintendent Dr. Reed, thank you for welcoming me to your board meeting tonight. I'm Dr. Cardell Patillo, President of the Virginia School Boards Association and Chair of the Portsmouth City School Board. It's a genuine honor to be here with all of you leaders who give so much of yourselves to ensure the best for all of our students. As stated, this is my twenty-fifth and final stop across the Commonwealth on the president's roadshow. On behalf of the VSBA Board of Directors, I want to take a moment to sincerely thank you for being a valued member of our association. Your commitment to the students here in Fairfax County and throughout the Commonwealth is deeply appreciated. The work you do is not easy, but it's incredibly important, and we are grateful for your dedication and your leadership. I'm especially thankful to be present for tonight's special recognition. Your commitment to supporting military-connected students and their families is inspiring and a reminder of the lasting impact that our schools have on our children and families. At the VSBA, we are founded on the principle of local control, believing that decisions about education are best made by those who know their communities and students the best, you, the local school board. Please know that we are here for you, standing beside you as partners in this essential work. We are proud to support you and to continue advocating for the success of public education alongside such committed and passionate board members. Your tireless efforts to provide the resources, opportunities, and environments our students need to thrive are making a real difference. I want you to know that your hard work does not go unnoticed, and we at VSBA appreciate everything that you do here in Fairfax every day for the future of public education. Thank you again for your service, your membership, and your commitment to our shared mission. We are here for you, and we deeply appreciate your ongoing dedication. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Dr. Patillo, for your remarks and emphasizing the importance of public education across the Commonwealth. I'd like to welcome Dr. Patillo to join the board for a photo in front of the dais. Agenda item two point zero four, I call on Mr. McElveen for a proclamation, Veterans' Day proclamation.
Whereas Veterans' Day, observed annually on November eleventh in the United States, is a time to honor and recognize the selfless service and sacrifices of all those past and present who served with the U.S. Armed Forces to defend the freedoms and rights that are so important to our nation's democracy. And whereas Veterans' Day, formerly known as Armistice Day, is the anniversary of the signing of the armistice by the Allies and Germans in nineteen eighteen, ending World War One, Armistice Day officially received its name in the United States in nineteen twenty-six and became an official national holiday in nineteen thirty-eight through congressional resolutions. In nineteen fifty-four, President Eisenhower signed a congressional bill that changed the holiday's name to Veterans' Day. And whereas Americans owe a great debt to the soldiers, sailors, airmen, and marines who serve and defend our freedom in war and peace and their families and communities that support them. And whereas Fairfax County Public Schools has strong ties to our veterans, as our division proudly employs many veterans who now serve as teachers, administrators, and support staff in our schools and division departments. Also, FCPs serves over fourteen thousand military-connected students and their families. And whereas Fairfax County Public Schools acknowledges the profound impact that military service has not only on those who serve, but also on their families, particularly the children of service members, who often face unique challenges due to the demands placed on military families, including frequent relocations and deployments. And whereas FCPs is committed to providing military-connected students with the best possible education and an inclusive and supportive educational environment that fosters stability and community, FCPs seeks to earn the Purple Star School designation for every one of our schools as a symbol of that commitment. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the Fairfax County School Board does hereby proclaim November eleventh, two thousand and twenty-four as Veterans' Day. We urge all students, employees, and community members to join in appropriate activities to pay tribute to the members of our military and stress the importance of service to our country as a core value in our democracy. Therefore, be it resolved, be it further resolved, that Fairfax County School Board reaffirms our commitment that military-connected students and their families are welcome, supported, and valued in our schools.
Thank you, Mr. McElveen. Is there a second?
I second.
Ms. Anderson, I'll call for the vote. All those in favor, Ms. Maron, Ms. Dixitt, Mr. McElveen, Dr. Anderson, Ms. Anderson, Ms. Seismarheiser, Mr. Moon, Ms. Lady, Ms. St. John Cunningham, and myself. That is unanimous for board members present. The motion passes. You can applaud. Can we take a brief moment to have anybody who is a veteran or serving in the armed forces to please rise for appreciation? Thank you for your service. Agenda item two point zero five, counselors, social workers, nurses, and psychologists. I call on Ms. Maron for a proclamation.
Whereas the Celebration of School Counselors, Social Workers, Nurses, and Psychologists Month honors the dedicated professional services staff in elementary, middle, and high schools who ensure the physical, mental, and emotional health needs of our students are met both in and out of school. And whereas Fairfax County Public Schools employs nearly seven hundred school counseling professionals, including school counselors, directors of student services, and college and career specialists, who are committed to preparing students to become lifelong learners and productive members of a global society with a focus on social-emotional wellness, academic success, and college and career readiness. And whereas school social workers maintain expertise in many areas such as mental health, human development, behavior, trauma, and family systems, FCPs social workers use their training, experience, and skills to provide vital services to children, families, and school staff, helping to remove personal and environmental barriers to support student academic achievement. And whereas school nurses create safe and supportive learning environments as the first responders in schools, promoting wellness and improving health outcomes for students. They collaborate with school staff, families, communities, and healthcare providers to ensure the safety and well-being of students. And whereas school psychologists are key members of the school team who assess individual strengths against students and school barriers to learning and apply their expertise and training in mental health, learning in behavior, and research-driven prevention and intervention strategies to help students develop and nurture the social, emotional, and life skills necessary to achieve personal growth, build resilience, and foster a sense of belonging. And whereas these school counselors, social workers, nurses, and psychologists are highly skilled professionals who are committed to helping every child succeed by ensuring equitable access to opportunities, building relationships that strengthen student and family engagement, and supporting mental wellness to help students thrive academically, socially, and emotionally. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the Fairfax County School Board recognizes November two thousand and twenty-four as School Counselors, School Social Workers, School Nurses, and School Psychologists Month and expresses its highest commendation and deep gratitude for the critical role these professionals play in supporting our students' emotional, social, and physical well-being, helping them to thrive in school, at home, and in life.
Thank you, Ms. Maron. Is there a second?
I second.
Thank you, Ms. Dixitt. I'll call for the vote. All those in favor, Ms. Maron, Ms. Dixitt, Mr. McElveen, Dr. Anderson, Ms. Anderson, Ms. Seismarheiser, Mr. Dunn, Mr. Moon, Ms. Lady, Ms. St. John Cunningham, and myself. That is unanimous for all board members present. The proclamation carries. Congratulations.
Section two point zero six, Jackson Middle School's seventieth anniversary, I call on Mr. Frisch for a proclamation.
Thank you. Luther, whereas Luther Jackson Middle School originally opened in September nineteen fifty-four as Luther Jackson High School, serving as the first high school for Black students in Fairfax County, Virginia, was named after Dr. Luther Porter Jackson, a distinguished historian, educator, and civil rights leader, and a significant contributor to the understanding of Black history and the advancement of voting rights in Virginia. And whereas before the opening of Luther Jackson High School, a newly designated county historical site, Black students in Fairfax County were forced to travel to Manassas, Virginia, or Washington, D.C., and pay tuition for secondary education. And whereas in September nineteen sixty-five, Luther Jackson High School was converted into an integrated intermediate school when Fairfax County finally initiated desegregation efforts after a decade of resistance from local leaders who fought to maintain segregation following Brown versus the Board of Education decision in nineteen fifty-four, which declared racial segregation in public schools unconstitutional. And whereas Luther Jackson Middle School, one of the most racially and ethnically diverse schools in Fairfax County, uplifts students and the community through initiatives like the Family Literacy Program and On-Site Food Pantry, sustained in part by an innovative student-led vertical farming operation and robust after-school programming which offers opportunities to develop STEM literacy. And whereas Luther Jackson Middle School has been recognized for its many achievements, including the National School of Excellence Award in nineteen ninety-seven, the two thousand and twenty-four Virginia Music Educators Association Blue Ribbon Award for Outstanding Performance in Music Education, two thousand and twenty-four Battle of the Books County Champions, demonstrating exceptional skills in the two thousand and twenty-four Technology Student Association Technosphere State Competition, and its current principal named the Fairfax County Public Schools' two thousand and twenty-four Outstanding New Principal. And whereas Luther Jackson Middle School has become an integral part of Fairfax County community, hosting a televised educational innovation and community engagement forum chaired by former First Lady Hillary Rodham Clinton in nineteen ninety-six, and serving as the venue for Fairfax County School Board meetings since February nineteen eighty-one. And whereas, through its dedicated faculty, staff, and administrators, Luther Jackson Middle School recognizes that diversity is its strength and continues to uphold the legacy of its namesake by inspiring students to become engaged citizens and leaders equipped with the knowledge, empathy, and critical thinking skills needed to succeed in a dynamic world. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the Fairfax County School Board honors Luther Jackson Middle School on its seventieth anniversary for its remarkable history, its contributions to promoting educational opportunity and community engagement, and its unwavering dedication to fostering a vibrant and inclusive learning environment for future generations.
Is there a second? Second. Thank you, Dr. Anderson. I will call for a vote. All those in favor, Ms. Maron, Ms. Dixitt, Mr. McElveen, Dr. Anderson, Mr. Frisch, Ms. Seismarheiser, Mr. Dunn, Mr. Moon, Ms. Lady, and Ms. St. John Cunningham, and myself. And that's unanimous for all at the table.
Agenda item two point zero seven, Patrick Bane recognition. I call on Ms. Maron for a proclamation.
Whereas Fairfax County Public Schools is committed to accessibility in all aspects of programs and facilities for students while learning, for employees while working, and for community members engaging in school-related matters or while visiting FCPs facilities for a range of community and athletic activities. And whereas specifically, FCPs is committed to full compliance with the Americans with Disability Act, the ADA. And whereas accessibility to FCPs facilities, programs, and services largely begins upon arrival at FCPs parking lots. And whereas the Reston Accessibility Committee, the RAC, which was established by the Reston Citizens Association in two thousand and oh eight, promotes barrier-free access for people with mobility disability throughout Reston, whereby volunteers use information from the ADA to work with property managers and owners to remove external barriers, particularly those found in parking lots. And whereas since two thousand and seventeen, RAC has provided to FCPs input and assessments on the accessibility of parking lots at FCPs facilities in Reston, which has allowed FCPs to more swiftly and effectively remedy accessibility barriers. And whereas Patrick Bane, the FCPs manager of ADA infrastructure projects, has welcomed these findings and upholds the commitment to provide accessible and disability-friendly environments at school buildings, who is reliable for swiftly addressing needs, not only with a can-do attitude, but with a will-do attitude. And whereas the Fairfax County School Board values community partners like the Reston Accessibility Committee, that in addition to supporting FCPs, further recognize the hard work of FCPs staff to fulfill the mission of our public schools as community investments. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the Fairfax County School Board recognize FCPs employee Patrick Bane as the recipient of the Reston Accessibility Committee's Community Partner Award of two thousand and twenty-four.
Thank you, Ms. Maron. Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. McElveen. I'll call for the vote. All those in favor, Ms. Maron, Ms. Dixitt, Mr. McElveen, Dr. Anderson, Ms. Anderson, Ms. Seismarheiser, Mr. Dunn, Mr. Moon, Ms. Lady, Ms. St. John Cunningham, and myself. That is unanimous. The proclamation passes. Congratulations. Agenda item two point zero eight, Purple Star Schools Recognition. I call on Mr. Dunn for the recognition.
Virginia is home to over seventy-five thousand military-connected school-age students, more than any other state in the nation. All our FCPs schools proudly welcome and support the over thirteen thousand five hundred military-connected youth and their families who are part of our school communities. Tonight, we are honoring thirty-eight of our schools who have been awarded the Purple Star designation for the two thousand and twenty-four, two thousand and twenty-five school year. At this time, I would like to recognize the Fort Belvoir Garrison Commander Colonel David J. Stewart. In two thousand and eighteen, the Virginia Department of Education established the Purple Star designation to be awarded to military-friendly schools that have demonstrated a major commitment to students and families connected to our nation's military. Criteria established for the award were designed to increase educator awareness of military-connected youth and help schools structure their support to and for military-connected youth and their families. In the inaugural year, fourteen Fairfax County Public Schools received the Purple Star recognition. FCPs now boasts ninety-six Purple Star Schools. Schools that earned this prestigious designation received a special Purple Star recognition to display at their school. The Purple Star Award serves to set each of these schools apart for the hard work of the faculty, students, parents, and community partners who stand together who stand together to ensure that our military-connected students are supported academically, behaviorally, and emotionally during their transitions. We thank the FCPS school staff and students from these 38 schools earning the recognition this year for the warm welcome to their military-connected students, and we thank our military families for keeping our nation strong and safe. Families, students, and community members in the audience are invited to stand in support of their school as their school is announced. Brenmar Park Elementary. Bryant High School. Bush Hill Elementary. Cameron Elementary. Chantilly High School. Cherry Run Elementary. Claremont Elementary. Columbia Elementary. Cooper Middle School. Deer Park Elementary. Drainsville Elementary. Fairfax High School. Fairview Elementary. Flint Hill Elementary. Forest Dale Elementary. Fort Belvoir Primary School. Fort Belvoir Upper School. Great Falls Elementary. Haycock Elementary. Holland Meadows Elementary. Hunt Valley Elementary. Island Creek Elementary. John R. Lewis High School. Keene Mill Elementary. Little Run Elementary. Mount Eagle Elementary. Newington Forest Elementary. Oakview Elementary. Oakton High School. Old Creek Elementary. Pine Spring Elementary. Ravensworth Elementary. Riverside Elementary. Sangster Elementary. Union Mill Elementary. Waples Mill Elementary. Wayne Wood Elementary. White Oaks Elementary. Among the FCPS schools recognized this year, Cameron Elementary School, Island Creek Elementary School, and Ravensworth Elementary School have the unique distinction of being designated for a second time. Further, Claremont Elementary School, Fairview Elementary School, Flint Hill Elementary School, Fort Belvoir Primary School, Fort Belvoir Upper School, Hunt Valley Elementary School, Sangster Elementary School, and Wayne Wood Elementary School have the unique distinction of being designated for a third time. These consecutive designations are in recognition of these schools' impressive, ongoing commitment to welcoming military-connected students and families. I would like to invite Colonel David J. Stewart, Fort Belvoir Garrison Commander, to the podium to say a few words to our Purple Star schools.
All right. Good evening. I'm Colonel Dave Stewart, Fort Belvoir Garrison Commander. I'm joined with me tonight with Command Sergeant Major Dan Hopkins. He's the Garrison Command Sergeant Major. And I'd just like to thank the Fairfax County School Board members for this opportunity tonight. So I'm so thrilled to be here, and still more schools have chosen to participate in a Purple Stars School initiative this year, which is absolutely outstanding. So what started in Virginia in 2018 has now grown into a major initiative, and it is exciting to see Fairfax County Public Schools tonight is recognizing 38 new or renewing schools, which brings the total to 96 district schools. So the Purple Star Schools program is more than just a set of policy and practices, though, is a commitment to excellence, inclusivity, support that aligns perfectly with our Army values and the educational mission of Fairfax County. By embracing this program, we not only stand by our military families, but also enrich the overall educational community. Let us continue to put people first and strive to help every student be all they can be. As military-connected families regularly move to a new duty station, the students face stresses and challenges in new towns, a new school, a new crowd of faces that can make it hard to fit in. But even before arriving, military families can set expectations of inclusion as every participating Purple Star school has a webpage for military families. This page helps the family prepare for the move and highlights academic planning for military family and military family resources. When a military-connected student arrives in Fairfax County, they are immediately connected with one of the school's student ambassadors as part of the program, whether it's an Army Youth Sponsorship anchored for life or student-to-student. This immediately helps connect them with their peers and gain a fresh sense of belonging. The ambassadors invest their own time to give them a tour of the school, introduce them to other students, and also help them connect with student clubs and associations of interest. Each school being recognized tonight has its own ambassadors. And I'd like to ask the student representatives here tonight to stand up and be recognized. And let's give them a round of applause. Okay. Thank you for being that friendly face that greets our new and arriving military-connected students. Your first impressions help incoming students increase resilience, reduce stress, and boost academic achievement. You are doing a greater service for your community than you may know. And it may not feel like it, but you are all serving your nation. So thank you for your unwavering support to military families and for continuing to expand the reach of Purple Star schools within the district. Together, we can make a difference in the lives of those who serve their families. So thank you for letting me address the board tonight, and thank you for everything you do for our young ones.
Thank you, Colonel Stewart. We would also like to recognize members of the FCPS Military Connected Youth Process Action Team. This team's charge is to identify unique academic, behavioral, and social-emotional needs of military-connected youth and their families and ensure faculty and staff are informed and prepared to meet the identified needs, partnering with stakeholders as appropriate. At this time, I would also like to ask my colleagues, Colonel Stewart, our Superintendent, Dr. Reed, our Chief of Schools, Dr. Ponce, members of the Military Connected Youth Process Action Team, and Fort Belvoir School Liaison Officers, Marie Bailey and Ayesha Mahafi, to make their way to the dais to recognize these schools and be part of the group photos. Mr. Deputy Clerk, please call up each school by region to join us at the dais with their region leadership staff to receive their recognition and to take a group photo.
Once we do the Purple Star photos, we will do the proclamation photos.
Region one. Region one. Cooper Middle School, Drainsville Elementary School, Flint Hill Elementary School, Great Falls Elementary School, Oakton High School, and Waples Mill Elementary. Region two. Haycock Elementary School and Pine Spring Elementary School. Since Region three has 10 schools, we'll call up five schools at a time so we can fit everyone in the photo. For the first Region three group photo with the following schools, please come up to the dais to be recognized and take a group photo. Bryant High School, Bush Hill Elementary School, Cameron Elementary School, Claremont Elementary School, and Holland Meadows Elementary. For the second Region three group photo with the following schools, please come up to the dais to be recognized and take a group photo. Fort Belvoir Primary School, Fort Belvoir Upper School, Mount Eagle Elementary School, Riverside Elementary School and Wayne Wood Elementary School. Since Region four has 10 schools, we'll also call up five schools at a time. For the first Region four group photo with the following schools, please come up to the dais to be recognized and take a group photo. Cherry Run Elementary School, Fairview Elementary School, Hunt Valley Elementary School, Keene Mill Elementary School, and Newington Forest Elementary School. For the second Region four group photo with the following schools, please come up to the dais. Oakview Elementary School, Ravensworth Elementary School, Sangster Elementary School, Union Mill Elementary School and White Oaks Elementary School. Region five photos will also be taken in two groups. At this time, we'd like to invite the following to the dais. City of Fairfax School Superintendent, Mr. Plattenberg, and the staff of Fairfax High School. For the second Region five group photo with staff from Chantilly High School, For the second region five group photo, with staff from Chantilly High School, Deer Park Elementary School, Little Run Elementary School, and Old Creek Elementary School, please come to the dais. For region six. Brenmore Park Elementary School, Columbia Elementary School, Forestdale Elementary School, Island Creek Elementary School, and John R. Lewis High School. Mr. Chair, that was the last of our Purple Star Schools' recognition.
Alright, so we'll now call those up for our proclamation photos. I would like to welcome all those here in support of the Veterans Day proclamation to please join the board for a photo at the front of the dais. I would like to welcome Patrick Bain and those here in support of the Patrick Bain Recognition Proclamation to please join the board for a photo at the front of the dais. I would like to welcome all those here in support of the Jackson Middle School's 70th Anniversary Proclamation to please join the board for a photo at the front of the dais. This is the Jackson 70th Anniversary Proclamation. I would like to welcome all those here in support of the School Counselors, Social Workers, Nurses, and Psychologists Month Proclamation to please join the board for a photo at the front of the dais. That was our last photo.
Board members, please take your seats. Agenda item 3.01, Community Participation. The next order of business is community participation. We welcome all community members who are here and those who signed up to speak this evening. Additional information about signing up to provide comments at school board regular business meetings and public hearings can be found on the school board's website at During the signup process, community members acknowledged they were informed of the school board's expectations for proper decorum when providing comments. These expectations are also available online and with the printed agenda and meeting materials in the back of the room. We ask audience members to be respectful of one another. Shouting and outbursts will not be tolerated. Please hold your applause until the conclusion of a speaker's remarks. Audience members may not join speakers at the podium and should remain at their seats, including when recording video or taking photos. We are grateful to have you come and speak to us today, and thank you for your cooperation. School board members will be listening but not responding. Madam Deputy, uh, Madam Clerk? Are we doing? Mr. Deputy Clerk?
Ms. Deputy Clerk.
Oh, I didn't see you back there. Hello, I didn't see you there. Madam Deputy Clerk, please call the first speaker.
Subha Shree Navasaragavan. Subha Shree Navasaragavan. Victor Hall. Victor Hall. Chair Frisch, that was our last speaker.
Thank you very much. Agenda item 4.01, Student Representative Matters. I call on Ms. Sawant. Hello?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Good evening, everyone. I'd like to take a minute to thank the teachers, staff, and parents in our FCPS community who have served our country, defending the rights and freedoms that are fundamental to our democracy. Veterans Day honors the selfless service of these men and women. And then first, I'd like to thank all of our Purple Star Schools for supporting military-connected students and their families. Thank you to the FCPS students who we saw earlier who are in JRTC or others who are aspiring to pursue service and continue that on in our country. Next, I also want to express student gratitude, as I've heard from our SAC and student advisory committees, to our school counselors, social workers, nurses, and psychologists. Every high school in FCPS has a school psychologist who supports the individual student needs. Thank you to our counselors for being someone that students can rely on, someone that students can go to with anything they need. Moving to updates, recently, I met with the Fairfax City Student Representative to discuss how college and career resources are communicated across schools. We're fortunate to have an excellent team of college and career specialists who work hard to provide us with a wealth of opportunities and an array of resources available in the Northern Virginia region. However, it looks different at each school. Students from different schools receive varying updates and frequencies of emails, from some that can be every few days to others that receive them weekly. One senior from region five shared that it can be difficult to sort out the general resources from those that are specific to seniors, like scholarships or college opportunities. Newsletters are extremely helpful, but students wonder if there's a way to centralize this information even further. Adding more information to the FCPS Scholarships website, which I will be linking for students on Board Docs, which currently houses scholarships for seniors, could be valuables. Things like opportunities for the government school, student representative roles, NOVA dual enrollment courses, volunteer and research opportunities, could not only be offered through newsletters and NAVYANCE, but a site that every student can access easily for important updates. Between platforms like NAVYANCE and a consolidated web presence, we can ensure that every student has equitable access to the opportunities that they need to succeed and has different ways in which they can access those resources. Lastly, I'd like to touch on the recent work session regarding how Portrait of a Graduate should be addressed in the grading policy from some of the initial feedback that I've received. Portrait of a Graduate is about equipping skills with the essential life skills that they need: communicator, ethical and global citizen, creative and critical thinker. Skills that are important in our strategic plan are important for students to carry out beyond high school. Of course, the county as a whole is currently addressing several academic priorities, including literacy, making sure that every eighth grader is prepared for algebra, and addressing pandemic learning gaps. All are important, along with Portrait of a Graduate. The question now is how do we expand Portrait of a Graduate across all schools and fully implement it into the curriculum while also focusing on the other priorities that we have? As I've mentioned before, there are already models, like the Lewis Leaders and Madison Wings program, which show how it can be done in other formats. Through initiatives that vary at each school. If we further integrate POG competencies with existing advisory lessons that talk about durable skills, or the Global Classroom Project, or our Universal Design for Learning Strategies, we can create a phased approach to implementation, one that allows all students to benefit from these skills without overloading teachers or placing specific wording in the advisory policy just yet. For students who want to have a voice in shaping these policies and giving feedback on Portrait of a Graduate, as always, I encourage you to join the secondary advisory committee and discuss these important issues with us. You can apply at tinyurl.com/fcpspogpoll, and I'll have this linked on the social media and Board Docs as well. Thank you for your time, and I wish all students a successful start to second quarter. This one goes by really, really quick. And I'd also like to acknowledge my physics teacher from last year who was here in the audience. So, hi, Ms. Levy.
Thank you, Ms. Sawant. Agenda item 5.01, Action Item, Certification of Closed Meeting Compliance. In order to comply with Section 2.2-3712D of the Code of Virginia, it is necessary for the board to certify that since the Fairfax County School Board convened a closed meeting on November 14th, 2024, to the best of each board member's knowledge, only public business matters lawfully exempted from open meeting requirements, and only such business matters as were identified in the motion convening the closed meeting were heard, discussed, or considered by the board during the closed meeting. Do I have a motion? Dr. Anderson? Do I have a second? Mr. Moon? All those in favor? Ms. Maron? Ms. Dixit? Mr. McElveen? Dr. Anderson? Ms. Anderson? Ms. Seismarheiser? Mr. Moon? Ms. Lady? Ms. St. John Cunningham? And myself? That is unanimous for board members at the table? Agenda item 5.02, Action Item, Confirmation of Action Taken in Closed Meeting. There were no actions taken in closed meeting tonight. Agenda item 5.03, Action Item, Consideration of Extension to the Division Superintendent Contract. I call on Ms. Seismarheiser for a motion.
I move that the school board renews its contract with Dr. Michelle C. Reed as Division Superintendent and to authorize the chair to execute the amended contract as detailed in the agenda item.
Is there a second?
Second.
Ms. Lady? Ms. Seismarheiser, would you like to speak to your motion?
Yes, thank you. First, I'm very honored to move this motion to offer you an amended contract, to extend your contract, Dr. Reed. I had the honor of being the vice chair of the school board during our superintendent search when we hired you, and I remember thinking then, your vision for the future, your keen intelligence, and your warmth, and your healing spirit was what we needed at the time here in Fairfax County coming out of COVID. And I had the honor of being chair of the school board during your first year when we were figuring out sort of the new norms and processes. And I think what we have been able to accomplish and the goals you have set for the future. I remember when you started our first chairs meeting and you said, "We should get a strategic plan done by this year." And I said, "You want to do a brand-new strategic plan in your first year while you're still figuring out everything?" And you said, "Yes," and we did it. And now we have a new guiding document to take us to 2030, and I'm watching you implement very systematically, very thoughtfully, very intelligently, and sometimes having to tell me, "Hold on, we're going to get there, but we have to keep ourselves aligned." And you've done so much work to have staff, and principals, and teachers, and students, and families aligned, that it's been incredible. You came in during a very tumultuous time, and one of the things that I really was hoping you would bring was that healing power to help bring our community together. And when you came in, we had hundreds of people to sign up for community participation. We had a lot of people who were full of a lot of angst. And slowly, between your presence in the community and the work you've done behind the scenes to meet with people from all different walks of life and viewpoints, tonight was a testament to that hard work of what you've done to heal our community that we had no public comment. I don't think in my five years on the board I've ever seen that. And I welcome the public to come and speak to us, but I think it's a really strong testament to the work you've done. And in addition to that, we see the work on the academic side. We see the English proficiency in our multilingual learners, 11% increase, which is just amazing, inclusive preschool. And I know I've pushed you on a lot of these things, but just starting And I know I've pushed you on a lot of these things, but just starting that, the executive functioning pilot, and so much more, algebra for everybody by eighth grade, not just accessing it but being successful in it, and pushing advanced math and literacy, and the list could go on and on. The mental wellness of our students in the survey you can see is improving. It's very hard to come in to lead a large school system right after COVID, and you've done it with grace. You've done it where we're already seeing results. You've taken on everything we've thrown at you with a "could not be better," which sometimes I really wonder, and you've... I cannot wait to see what you accomplish. And so I'm really grateful that you're willing to stay. I'm grateful that I got to be part of bringing you here and working with you that first year, and thank you for moving our system forward, and thank you for all the work you will do with us.
Thank you, Ms. Seismarheiser. Ms. Lady, would you like to speak to your second?
Yes, I would. I don't want to repeat my colleague, but I certainly echo everything that she has just shared. I would just say on a personal note, as someone who worked in the system as long as I did, I actually watched and observed when you came in to be our superintendent. I was often, my wife shared with me, things that were shared by you, and the first thing I noticed was the interest in transparency, the interest in being Team FCPS, your commitment to understanding and supporting public education, to addressing issues where we had fallen short as a system and that we needed to improve. I will say that upon being elected and being able to share space with you, I think you are among the most talented educators I've ever shared space with, and also one of the most caring and compassionate. Your temperament, your disposition, your ability to see the good in everything, and recognize that we will be that beacon on the hill, we will be the Fairfax County Public Schools that we were at one point, we will be the model for the nation. And just every, everywhere that you're able to give your detailed attention, everything matters, whether it's infrastructure, whether it's, you know, inclusive preschool, whether it's course-taking patterns, whether it's ensuring, you know, we expand our academy offerings. But at the end of the day, you're about reading and writing and teaching, and making sure that all of our kids are reading by third grade. I'm so excited. In all my years of working in Fairfax, never did we have the same goal two years in a row at every elementary school, every middle school, and every high school. We have a strategic plan in place because of your vision, and I couldn't be more proud to be part of this team that gets to work with you and gets to renew this contract. Thank you for all you do every single day, and for being present and just really recognizing the potential each and every student that walks into our building, and also recognizing and uplifting all the staff who do the work, from bus drivers to custodial staff to food service, to your L-team and everyone in between. Just thank you. It's an honor to work with you.
Thank you, Ms. Lady. Ms. Marin?
Fairfax will be forever better because Michelle Reed is the Superintendent of Fairfax County Public Schools, which she has built to date and continues to build through amassing a team of professionals in every sector who expand and strengthen a collective vision is a marvel and a gift. I'm grateful every day for Michelle Reed. She brings educational expertise, organizational and moral leadership, humility, and integrity to everything she does. I continuously learn from Dr. Reed about education, about rising above adversity, and about putting the adult drama aside for the best interests of kids. She is achieving great gains for our students, and she is making us see a grander vision than we could possibly have seen before. So I thoroughly endorse the extension of her contract.
Before we continue, Mr. McDaniel has joined us, so I will recognize Ms. Anderson for a motion.
Mr. McDaniel has submitted a written request to attend... Oh. I move to lay the pending motion on the table so that we can vote to allow Kyle McDaniel to attend the meeting virtually.
Because you can't have two motions at the same time. So we're putting this aside for a second to allow Mr. McDaniel to come in. Is there a second?
Is there a second?
Mr. Dunn. It has been moved and seconded to lay the pending motion on the table without objection. The motion has been laid on the table. Seeing no objection?
I move to take up the motion that was previously...
Hang on one second. One second, I need to get the other part back up. Yep. All right. Mr. McDaniel has submitted a written request to attend tonight's meeting virtually due to a personal conflict and is located in Teeterboro, New Jersey. All those in favor of Mr. McDaniel's request? Ms. Marin, Ms. Dixitt, Mr. McElveen, Dr. Anderson, Ms. Anderson, Ms. Seismarheiser, Mr. Dunn, Mr. Moon, Ms. Lady, Ms. St. John Cunningham, myself? That is unanimous for Board members present. Mr. McDaniel, will you check your microphone?
I'm here, thank you.
Thank you very much.
I move to take up the motion that was previously laid on the table.
Is there a second? Ms. Seismarheiser. It has been moved and seconded to take the motion that had been previously laid on the table without objection. We will do that. The motion is taken back up. All right. Ms. Dixitt?
I full-heartedly support this motion, and as a new Board member, when I walked in first time in Dr. Reed's office, and I saw all the very nicely organized office and pictures of kids all over her wall, and we were talking, and Dr. Reed asked me, "What are your, you know, what is your passion? What do you want, goals for school board?" And we started talking, and one thing stood out from the first minute, that she's here for the kids. She's here for all our 182,000 or plus school students, for the staff. And I admired the passion, because I'm a very passionate person, the causes I believe in, and I felt like you are doing this for the kids. There is no, I think, a bigger joy for giving a gift of best education. And also, your comments about innovations and taking the school system to the next level, to be prepared for the tomorrow, you know, with all the changes happening in the world. And I think you are the right fit and the best fit we could ever have. So thank you so much, Dr. Reed.
Thank you, Ms. Dixitt. Ms. Anderson?
So, when I first met Dr. Reed, I told her that my number-one goal in Fairfax County was teacher retention, and I told her that she was at the top of my list that I wanted to retain. So I could not be happier to support this. I believe that she is part of the guiding light that is, and I appreciate the fact that she encourages us to always stay in the light as we're doing things that are hard. So I have often said, I have a sign over my front door that says, "Effort, not perfection." And what I love, and what I tell people all the time, is that every single time we find a problem, we figure out how to fix it. And it's not perfect, and we weren't perfect to start with, and we're going to keep going and actually do the best we can for the kids and the staff. And so I cannot say enough how grateful I am that we have you and how happy I am that we're going to keep you, so.
Thank you, Ms. Anderson. Mr. Moon?
Mr. Chairman, I'm happy to support this motion. Now, without repeating what has been already said by my colleagues, I just want to add one note, that over the course of the last three decades, from mid-1990s all the way to today, I have worked with, I guess, seven different superintendents plus interim superintendents. You know, I don't want to disparage all those superintendents, but, you know, Dr. Reed, Dr. Reed, you know, compared to all those superintendents, you are the one who has been willing to spend most amount of time with individual school board members, to be willing to work with each and every school board member. You are the one who never wants to cancel any meeting with me, at least. If there's any cancellation, it has to come from me rather than you. So thank you so much for working for us. I look forward to continuing to work with you for the next four years.
Thank you, Mr. Moon. Ms. St. John Cunningham?
So also not to repeat what a lot of people said, a lot of my colleagues have heard me say the bench for superintendents is not deep, and the bench is even shallower for excellent superintendents. And I feel that we have the most excellent superintendent on that bench, and I use that sports metaphor for you. And all I want to say is that I appreciate all your work, and I think all of us take to heart your parting words in every message. Together, all things are possible.
Thank you, Ms. St. John Cunningham. Mr. Dunn?
I just, without adding too many words, what I admire most about Dr. Reed is the fact that she is tireless. She clearly derives much joy and energy from the work she does, because I don't know of many human beings who can put in the hours she puts in, not just during the workday, but every evening, every weekend, driving herself all over the county, pushing herself constantly while keeping the system moving forward, taking on the challenges that have been left unaddressed sometimes for many years or decades, and doing it all at once. And somehow, it's working, and it's working smoothly. And I have great admiration for Dr. Reed as a leader, both of our school and of our community, and appreciate the fact that she has dedicated her time and talents to improving outcomes, not only for Fairfax County but for all students, because this is a critical time in the history of public education. We face great challenges to date and going forward, and I have full confidence that we will navigate them successfully under her leadership.
Thank you, Mr. Dunn. Ms. Sawant?
I'll speak really briefly to this, but the first time that I met Dr. Reed, she didn't know about this, was through a YouTube video where she was talking with other students at the table in the midst of the pandemic, just as we were coming out of it, about what they valued in their schools and what they wanted to see. And that's when I was really excited about our new superintendent and getting to work with students. And now, like, getting to work with her on this dais is just so exciting. And, you know, in my conversations with her, it's always the questions turned around into, like, "What do the students want to see?" Or, "How do you think a student would address this?" And I really appreciate the student voice that you bring to this table, and I know the previous student representatives can agree with me as well. So thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Sawant. Mr. McDaniel?
Thank you, and I just wanted to say, well, Mr. Dunn kind of stole my thunder. I was going to say that the superintendent puts the Energizer Bunny to shame, and she really does. But I've also come to appreciate her no-nonsense approach and the way that she incorporates business rules and business processes into trying to run a large organization more efficiently so we can focus every spare penny that we have where it matters the most, because in the classroom, on our teachers and kids. So thank you for that, and I look forward to continuing to work with you.
Thank you, Mr. McDaniel. I'll take a turn. I will be supporting this contract extension, which includes Dr. Reed's current rate of pay with enhanced deferred compensation, because I am incredibly thankful for the dynamic, focused, and thoughtful leadership that Superintendent Reed has demonstrated since joining Fairfax County Public Schools. Her work has elevated FCPS to new heights by forging stronger relationships with families, students, staff, and our community. There is not a day that goes by that you don't hear from somebody who has met Dr. Reed out in the community. Her laser-like focus finding and implementing innovative ways to enhance academic expectations and achievement is having a meaningful impact on the lives of our students. You can see it here on display every time we have a school board meeting. I look forward to our continued collaboration as our Board continues to work with her to accomplish the student-centered goals of our 2023 to 2030 strategic plan. Many people may not know this, but the year before Dr. Reed joined FCPS, she was named National Superintendent of the Year. Having watched her up close these last two years, the exceptional work she does, the great care that she takes in everything that she does to get it right or to get it better, I have zero doubt that they made that right decision, and only question how they couldn't be making it over and over again, year after year. So thank you, Dr. Reed, for agreeing to stay on with us and to continue working together. Everything is not perfect. We've got our work cut out for us, and I know you're up for it. So thank you. Seeing no others, we will go to the vote. All those in favor of the motion on the screen, please raise your hand. Ms. Marin, Ms. Dixitt, Mr. McElveen, Dr. Anderson, Ms. Anderson, Ms. Seismarheiser, Mr. Dunn, Mr. Moon, Ms. Lady, Ms. St. John Cunningham, Mr. McDaniel, and myself? That is unanimous. Moving right along. I'm just kidding. All right. Agenda item 5.04, Action Item, Comprehensive Facilities Condition Assessment.
I call on Mr. Dunn for a motion.
I move that the school board authorize $3 million in funding from the School Board Flexibility Reserve to be combined with the $2 million previously allocated in fiscal year 2023 to complete the initial phases of a comprehensive facility condition assessment of all FCPS-owned school buildings, facilities, to include athletic facilities, and infrastructure, to include tracked and untracked. Any unspent funds at the conclusion of the facility condition assessment shall be transferred back to the School Board Flexibility Reserve.
Is there a second?
I second.
Mr. Dunn, would you like to speak to your motion?
Yes, I would. Thank you. This is a motion that I am pleased to have Mr. Frisch seconding, and I thank him for his support. It is based on motions that I have brought on two previous occasions. As the Chair of the Comprehensive Planning and Development Committee and the Liaison to the Facilities Planning Advisory Council, I am keenly aware of the many challenges that FCPS faces, and trying to ensure that every child, every child, has a safe, modern, and functional learning environment, and that all schools have modern, updated, athletic, and other facilities and infrastructure. The data that we have available to today is incomplete, but it generally shows that many of our school buildings are long overdue for renovations, and that is clear to our staff, clear to our students. The industry standard for school renovations is 20 to 25 years. We are nearly double that. At 42 years, we have a deferred maintenance backlog of $530 million and an infrastructure backlog of $370 million. We need to be more focused, we need to have the data to enable us to prioritize how we spend our dollars. We have $230 million a year from school bonds, but we have capital assets of $7 billion and 28 million square feet of school building space. We have 199 schools and 224 school buildings. We just have a great need to modernize our school buildings and campuses. And so the question is, how do we do that? Do we have data to differentiate between the needs of different schools to enable an apples-to-apples comparison? And today, we don't. And the best practice from private sector and public sector is to conduct what's called a facilities condition assessment, where you go out and you evaluate the physical condition of all your school buildings using consistent criteria, so you know down to, you know, the systems, electrical, mechanical, and all the way down to playgrounds, roofs, et cetera, what is the condition of the buildings and how can you improve them? And then you can make apples-to-apples comparisons and prioritize your dollars to fix that which needs to be fixed and establish a new renovation queue, which historically has governed when schools are scheduled for renovations. This is a very important step, this motion, to establish additional funding on top of the $2 million previously funded by the prior Board, so that our Facilities Department, led by Janice Samansky, has the resources needed to collect that data, which then can inform the development of a new renovation queue. Thank you.
Mr. Frisch, would you like to speak to your second?
Yes, thank you. While I always was supportive of the intent of the effort in previous iterations, I didn't want this work funded at the expense of another item in the superintendent's budget. So now I am supportive, because it is being funded from the School Board Flexibility Reserve, which does not impact the operational budget. And in my opinion, and we'll talk about this a little bit later this evening, that's a, these are the exact types of projects that the Flexibility Reserve should be used for, things that impact the entire division and are not commitments over many, you know, commitments for, you know, annual renewal, et cetera. And this is an exceptional case. This is something we've not done before, and we've got important work around the development of the queue coming up. So this assessment will provide us with invaluable data that can transform how we plan and prioritize renovations and construction projects in FCPS by anchoring our approach with a comprehensive facilities condition assessment. We're not just planning for immediate needs but building on a solid foundation for the future, where every school- on a solid foundation for the future, where every school receives the attention it deserves. With the completion date expected in mid-2026, the facility condition assessment will provide accurate, consistent, and objective data, enabling the school division to prioritize investments in school construction and renovation projects, consistent with the recommendations we've received from experts. Considering budget constraints, FCPS is pursuing this work in a phased manner. The current renovation queue, which we talk a lot about on this board, is nearing its completion. By 2030, the last school in the current renovation queue and the first school in the future renovation queue will be in design. The useful life of school facilities and building assets requires renovation on a 25-year cycle. When I joined the board, I think we were at 37 years, 36 years. Because of the pandemic and the way that costs increased, we're now in the 42-year range, which, you know, has only been exacerbated by those increasing costs. So, the work we do here will enable us to be more thoughtful and more prescriptive about the queue that is ultimately established, because we'll know more about the buildings that we're prioritizing. Thank you.
Dr. Anderson.
Thank you. I'm glad to support this motion. I think I did in your previous attempts, Mr. Dunn. And I won't belabor the point. I think both you and Mr. Frisch really articulated many of the reasons why this is a necessary piece of work, but I also want to highlight the following. When we started on the board, I was always perplexed by how schools were identified for renovation or additional construction. It was always up to the school board member to push. So, we're at the table jockeying for why the schools that we represent should be the ones added to the queue. That is not a good way of doing business. That's not even an equitable way of doing business. Certainly, it's not an informed way of doing business. What I'm really looking forward to is the fact that this kind of data collection will allow us to have an objective set of criteria that will really bring an equitable lens to the work of renovation and to the work of expansion of our schools. We always strive to be a data-driven school division, and this will exactly do that in the area of facilities. So, for those reasons, I'm very happy to support.
Ms. Marin? Yes, I'm happy to support this motion, and thank you, Mr. Dunn, for your persistence, and Mr. Frisch for joining. We need to talk about and work more on the upkeep of our long-term plans for our school facilities. We need the details about what the needs are. You know, the renovation weight has gotten way out of touch with reality and with the needs of our students, our staff, and our community. And we need to keep reminding the community that our buildings really are used pretty much seven days a week. I mean, I've been in schools I represent at 9:00 PM picking up my kid from basketball. I voted on Election Day. We've got churches, you know, and houses of worship that hold their services in our schools. These are not like other county buildings that may have a nine-to-five workflow. And we're using our facilities hard. We've got kids. We've got athletics. I mean, we've got sports fields that we want to be environmentally friendly and accessible. There's just so many things, but we've heard a lot of things tangentially. And if we have a thorough report, then we can really start to understand what the costs are, and then we have to go and get that money. And on that note, you know, we also tonight are approving by consent the bond program. And I think that not enough of our public is yet aware that the enormous amount of the $4 billion it takes to run our schools annually, there's nothing in there for renovation and construction. That's a whole other pot of money, but it's not enough. And so, I would like to have our board discuss with our partners, the County Board of Supervisors, who manage the public bond process, you know, what are some options with the bond program? Can we have high-impact public bonds that are dedicated to school facilities, including for modernization, for environmental sustainability, and for safety? We currently do not have a dedicated stream for safety upgrades in our schools. We know that our parents and staff and children want this. I'd like to understand how the county's capital improvement program, the CIP, accounts for our schools in that, because we are also trying to meet goals of environmental sustainability. So, are those together or are they separate? You know, as the board hosts public meetings and public hearings about facilities through the annual work on our capital improvement program, so that's early this year, January, February, what questions can our board ask in those sessions of ourselves? Like, what's the information that we need to get from the superintendent to share with the Board of Supervisors, so we can show the financial need and the impact on residents? It's not just students. It's not just our kids in our schools. It is our whole community. So, thank you again for bringing this, and I'm eager to vote for it.
Dr. Anderson for a go-back.
Yes, thank you. I had forgotten a couple of things that I wanted to make sure we clarified for the listening public. Ms. Samansky, these evaluations will also not include just the school buildings themselves, but the athletic fields and the facilities surrounding that? Is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay. Thank you. And what we're expecting to receive in turn, well, what we're hoping, I know there's still a process left to come if this is successful, but the information we're expected to receive, will that be some sort of rating of the schools? If you could speak to that just a little bit, that would be helpful.
Sure. And we're still developing what that scope is looking like, but what we would like to do is have some sort of report out where components of each building are ranked. And again, we're going to look at what makes sense, and also relying on the vendor that we choose to kind of advise on what that looks like. And then, that will then inform and feed into a framework that we develop for that new renovation queue.
Thank you. Will that also include information regarding renovation type? For example, you could have your renovation light where maybe it's just a few cosmetic changes, or is it a complete gut job? Or is it just an extension or an addition? Will that be part of this work? Will we be provided with those recommendations and guidance?
I definitely think that's something we're going to want to work out with that vendor that develops the framework of the queue. And it's actually our intent to hire one company to do both, because they're going to be learning about the facility, assessing it, and that information is going to feed, you know, our plan, our pipeline, that queue, and that could definitely be part of that conversation for that piece.
Because I also think that would be very useful data. Thank you.
Seeing no other lights, I will call for the vote on the motion, which is on the screen. All those in favor, Ms. Marin, Ms. Dixitt, Mr. McElveen, Dr. Anderson, Mr. Frisch, Ms. Seismarheiser, sorry, Mr. Dunn, Mr. Moon, Ms. Lady, Ms. St. John Cunningham, and myself. Hold on. Hold on. Any nays? Abstentions? Mr. McDaniel. Can the clerk please read the vote?
Sorry. Did you announce Mr. Frisch?
Yes.
All right. Then we are at 11:01 with Mr. McDaniel abstaining.
The motion passes.
All right. You'd be surprised how hard it is to read a list of names, even though you do it over and over and over again. Yeah.
All right. Sorry. Ms. Anderson, we need to clarify from Mr. McDaniel if that was a yes or an abstention.
It's an abstention.
Okay. Thank you.
All right. Agenda item 5.04. Nope, we just did that. Yes, thank you. This is what happens when you skip an entire section. I, I call on Ms. Anderson for a follow-on motion.
I move that the school board direct the current budget chair and vice chair to develop a process and criteria for encumbering the school board reserve fund to be brought for board discussion at a board work session in the spring of 2025.
Is there a second?
I second.
Ms. St. John Cunningham. Ms. Anderson, would you like to speak to your motion, follow-on motion?
As we move into a more tenuous budget situation, I think it's really important for the school board to set intention behind how we're going to use the school board reserve fund. I think that the model that was used this evening was appropriate in terms of the fact that it is identified for something that's going to impact a large number of schools, but I think that it's worth the conversation from the board to get the opportunity to actually discuss how those funds should be utilized, particularly since it's the pot of money that we have direct control over every year.
Thank you, Ms. Anderson. Ms. St. John Cunningham, would you like to speak to your second?
I concur, and I think it's definitely worth the conversation, because I think I still have to understand how some of it works, and I think I'd like to do a deeper dive.
Thank you, Ms. St. John Cunningham. Ms. Seismarheiser?
Thank you, and I really appreciate the makers of this motion, the maker and the seconder of this motion, because I think, to your point of a tighter budget situation now, the last couple of years and going in the future, having that greater transparency and clarity for our public in terms of how we use our school board reserve fund, what's the criteria by which we encumber it, what's the process by which we encumber it, I really do believe in having greater transparency. We are entrusted with public funds and public dollars, and so having this process helps clarify to our public what that, you know, what we're doing with it and why, and what the purpose of these funds are for. So, I think I'm really excited about this, because, and it's, all the motion is doing right now is just sending this to develop a process and criteria, to bring it back to the board for further discussion. There's nothing actually being voted on that's going to change any action right now, but I think creating a process for greater clarity and transparency is always good. So, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Seismarheiser. Ms. Marin?
Yes. First, may I just ask that the motion language be displayed, please? Thank you. So, I agree with the spirit of this follow-on, and, you know, I'm all for processes and being clear on what we're doing, especially when it comes to our money. I just think that it's, I'd like to discuss it further. I would prefer to wait until our budget work starts, which is really just a matter of weeks. We just had our first meeting this week. So, I'd like it to be more tied to that and not necessarily tied to this particular action. I think that sends some kind of a message that I'm just not, I just would like it to be more tied to a budget. It's a budgetary aspect, and there might even be other things that the budget chair and vice chair might want to work on that will come up in the budget session. So, I'm not going to be able to support it today, but I would love to revisit this even, you know, as soon as January, and talk about other ways that our board can really focus on budget work and do it in a more fulsome way than just one-offs right now. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Marin. I'll take a turn, you know, as the seconder of the previous motion. I, you know, one of the things that I think gets lost on a lot of people is how we have to do our work as board members with individual phone calls, you know, to try and move anything on this board. And as Mr. Dunn and I have been having conversations with colleagues about the motion we just passed, one of the things that became clear is that there's a lot of thoughts about this aspect of the work and a lot of interest in it. And I think that a, you know, it perfectly aligns with the timing of our budget conversations to say a work session in the spring. Ms. Anderson and I haven't talked about it, but it would likely be at one of our budget work sessions based on that timing. So, I'm supportive of the motion, because I think that kind of detail is helpful and can help with those conversations. Mr. McDaniel?
So, just to kind of address that point of timeline, I, as the budget chair, I did speak with our finance staff yesterday or the day before about the potential of this motion passing. The specific questions that I asked were about timing, and we, I'm confident that we have enough latitude between now and budget adoption to put something in place and align it with our budget deliberations. And I would anticipate that a motion, if any, to put in place a process would more than likely be in the form of a follow-on to the actual budget adoption itself. So, from a timing and workload perspective, we can get this done.
Thank you, Mr. McDaniel. Ms. Marin, Ms. Seismarheiser, would you have a go-back? All right. Ms. Marin for a go-back.
Yeah, thank you. You know, as I, as I read it again, and, you know, again, this is why I would like to have more time to reflect on it, because it's a really meaty topic. You know, I don't see why the budget chair and vice chair can't just do this. I mean, if they think that the board needs to, they can. I know, you know, when I was vice chair, we worked on things. We're like, oh, the board can really use this. Let's talk to people and figure out, do they agree? Because I also am concerned that we're now, okay, we've got another assignment for our committee, and they're going to have to do this work, but it's also budget season, and we've got a lot of work to do. So, like, in just the totality of things, you know, and I just mentioned capital improvements, like, this is a super busy time of year for us. So, I'm happy if the chair and the vice chair want to go about the process of getting input from each of us in that two-by-two, you know, format, you know, developing a draft. I'm putting it out. I don't need to direct to do that. That could just be part of what it is to be the board chair and vice chair. I mean, I'm encouraged to hear that the board, excuse me, the budget chair thinks this is an okay thing, but having gone through a full budget process myself one or two times or more, it gets busy, and we have a very tumultuous time period coming up. So, I'd rather not have us overpromise and under-deliver on this.
Thank you, Ms. Marin. Dr. Anderson?
Yes. I'm glad to support this. I just have a few questions, and I'm not sure if the budget chair and vice chair have responses to it at this time. But how do you anticipate gathering input from the rest of us to help inform what you bring forward? Is it going to be part of the two-by-two? That's the typical part of the budget process, or a separate conversation?
Mr. McDaniel, would you like to respond?
I mean, sure. That, I can certainly do that. The short answer is, I think, all channels of outreach are on the table. I don't have a plan in place. This motion language just came 48 hours ago. But whether it's a two-by-two, or a survey, or it could be a topic of conversation at a work session that then leads into further conversations, you know, I would have to work with the vice chair, the budget vice chair, to come up with a working plan on it.
That would be my only ask, if we could just get that. I know it's been limited time, as you mentioned. This was only before us two days ago, but I would be very much interested in terms of how the input will be gathered.
Thank you, Dr. Anderson. All right. Seeing no others, we'll take a vote. All those in favor of the follow-on motion on the screen, Ms. Dixitt, Mr. McElveen, Dr. Anderson, Ms. Anderson, Ms. Seismarheiser, Mr. Dunn, Mr. Moon, Ms. Lady, Ms. St. John Cunningham, Mr. McDaniel, and myself. Opposed? Abstentions? Ms. Marin. Will the clerk read the vote?
11:01. The motion carries.
Thank you. Agenda item 5.05, action item, secondary course offerings. I call on Ms. St. John Cunningham for a motion.
I move that the school board approve changes to the list of middle and high school course offerings for the 2025-2026 school year, as recommended by the Course Review Committee and detailed in the agenda item.
Is there a second?
I second.
Ms. Marin. Ms. St. John Cunningham, would you like to speak to your motion?
No.
Thank you. Ms. Marin, would you like to speak to your second?
Yes, thank you. I know this was intended to go through on consent initially, but I did think it was an opportunity for us to talk about course offerings, because that is such an, often a topic that we hear, and it really impacts just, you know, a large part of our population in the middle school and secondary grades. So, you know, I've talked since with the superintendent and staff and colleagues, and I understand there's a lot of differences in different schools, but what I'm trying to understand is, how can we ensure the most access to what students are interested in and need in a time when we know there's a teacher shortage, our funding is not what it should be, we know that moving children from school to school to get programming has its challenges? So, I have a few questions that I wanted to ask the superintendent, if she could share a bit more about how we make these decisions about what gets offered. So, one of them was, Dr. Reed, what are the barriers in providing the selection of courses that the Instructional Services Department believes is needed and also desired by students and employees?
So, thank you, Ms. Marin. I think that what, I think the lists before you this evening are courses that the staff or students have shared an interest in somewhere in the division. In other words, it's put into what we might characterize as a comprehensive division-wide course catalog. Most of these are high school courses that you see in front of you, and what happens is those become courses that can now be placed on registration form for students to sign up for. And what occurs is if there's not an adequate signup for courses at a particular school, it won't be able to be offered at that school. I think there are also possibilities, for example, the data science dual enrollment. We know our dual enrollment classes have very strict guidelines around teacher certification, and we've had some real challenges finding staff that have the certification to be dual enrollment staff. So, that's been certainly the, you know, a pinch point for offering those courses, but essentially, the courses in front of you are to add to that course catalog. We would not, and I know we course catalog. We would not, and I know we had this conversation, we would not anticipate all of these courses being offered at every high school in the coming year. They would simply be options for staff to put on registration forms to see what student interest is.
Well, thank you. And, I mean, to the point about not, or the dual enrollment having some hoops to jump through, I mean, if the board understands where that is legislatively, we can then go to our General Assembly and say, this right here in the code is what prevents us. So, I would ask that we have that information. You know, but I wonder about something that we used to call the Fairfax Promise. Like, what is the absolute basic, you know, level that every student is guaranteed for access? And as things change, like, is it now coding and computer science? Is it music? I mean, you know, is it world language? Like, you know, so these courses are being added, but I think that sometimes, I hear in the community that they feel like it's kind of a false advertisement, because, yeah, it's kind of available, but not if you have the staffing, and people don't understand the whole staffing and all of that. So, you know, how can we get more clear about what's really available to students in their school?
So, thank you for that question, Ms. Marin. I think that predominantly, the courses in front of you this evening are, we would characterize as elective courses. They wouldn't be courses that are core, that we would expect to offer at every high school. To perhaps Dr. Presidio, do you want to take a moment and elaborate?
Yeah, I think between Ms. Klemenko and I, we can probably try to help with some of this. I think, Ms. Marin, I appreciate all your questions about this, because having the, the courses that our students need and want is one of the most important things that we can do to promote student engagement and the learning experience. I think what we try to do, and this is not just in FCPS, but in, in most school divisions, to have student interest really drive the elective choices that are going to be provided in the school. So, having that longer list of standard course offerings, and then allowing students to make decisions about which courses they're most interested in, and maximizing the enrollment in those courses, is really the approach that we're taking here. If we were to start to standardize required elective courses, you could create more consistency from school to school, but students in one school might not be able to get that course that they wanted to, because they were required, in a sense, the school was required, in a sense, to offer another course. So, really, through the electives, we want students to have the opportunities to pursue their interests, their passions, possible future career interests. And we really, really try to let students, you know, selection drive that process. There are other factors, of course, that are limiting sometimes. Certifications, we already talked about. Certainly, you know, sometimes facilities issues is a challenge. You can think about things like that. But as much as possible, we really want student interest to drive the elective offerings in our schools.
Well, thanks. And, you know, I, I think that's fair, and I don't want to standardize, you know, for the point of it, but sometimes students don't know what they don't know. I mean, I don't know what I don't know sometimes. So, how can a student know that they're interested if they've never been exposed to it? And I know, I don't have a single student, the last time I checked, that goes down to the Edison location for their wonderful career programs, in electrical and HVAC, and there's not one student in all the schools I represent, because it's too far. It's on the other side of the county. So, what is the plan to expand that access? So, these are just kind of the questions that I've had in talking with colleagues. You know, as we talk about coursework and access and equity, how are these decisions being made? So, I appreciate the opportunity to talk a little bit about it tonight, and I'm sure we'll continue it.
Thank you, Ms. Marin. Ms. Lady?
Thank you. I'm going to make a few comments, just because this is sort of my wheelhouse. You know, I certainly, as someone who built master schedules and responded to student asks, just to help maybe my colleagues understand that optional course offerings anyone in the county can, can offer, if their instructional council agrees to do it. And we did often add additional optionals to our course catalog, because students heard about it being taught at a different school, and came to us and showed the interest. So, we put it on the menu of selections, and then if you had enough people select it, we taught it. Most of what's being approved here is not, other than the DE, is not an instructional license barrier for us to teach in any of our schools. So, I want to uplift that as well. My question is in regard to guitar, moving from optional to standard. Who's going to pay for guitar? And I'm going to give my example that when I was at Chantilly, my choir, I mean, my orchestra teacher was paid, you know, as an itinerary, paid from Central. We, he had enough students in his program to be full-time, but he wanted his, to have four ensembles instead of five, because he wanted to also have room to teach guitar. And we had to pay the guitar section every year. So, I did get a request from, actually, a principal who wanted to know who's going to pay for guitar. Are they expected to staff it themselves, or is that going to come centrally?
So, thank you, Ms. Lady. I think that we need to be clear that the courses offered at the schools, and in particular, some of the courses that are still rebounding from the pandemic, we definitely want to be funding centrally. So, I, I will have to talk to Dr. Presidio and Ms. Burden, and Ms. Burden's not here tonight, so, but I do want to say that we want, some of our programs, we've really provided support to have the student, student enrollment return since the pandemic, and also where we're starting programs that may be new to the county. And I want to call out ballet as an example. When we think about equitable moves, and Megan was there as we were talking with our Student Advisory Council, the cost for students to participate in dance in our community is really expensive. And in many cases, we haven't paid stipends for our dance advisors either. So, we need to recognize that our fine and performing arts are a cornerstone of an education, and something we value significantly here in Fairfax County. There's tremendous research that talks about the value of our fine and performing arts. So, in this case, ballet, I've talked to high school principals and said, this is a first foray into this, and we're going to support that and fund that, because we know that there are young people, there are careers in the ballet that are available, and we want to make sure that as we seed programs, that we fund those centrally. The guitar program is a program that's rebounding from the pandemic, and again, an important part of our fine and performing arts program. But I appreciate the question, and, you know, it's always a tension between funding sources, but we want to make sure that staff feel supported for these student opportunities.
Thank you for that. I also want to also mention Teachers for Tomorrow. I, that's another one that I have talked to a number of principals, given the teacher shortages that we have in our country, certainly in our, in our state and in our county, that those are also funded by the school, and too many of them were cut, at least from the perspective of folks I talked to. You know, meanwhile, they've got to maybe teach the third level of a language that might be enrolled at 17 students, but they've got 17 in Teachers for Tomorrow, and they cut it. So, I would like to figure out if we can support that from central funding as well. No need to comment. I just am, I'm sort of making that ask, because I think our schools need to be teaching that. And then the last thing is a little bit a tougher topic for me. And, you know, the bottom line is, we're adding these weights to a lot of courses. I know before I left the county, I was part of a committee that was looking at weights, and I argued for the arts. I said, you're weighting all these CTE courses, you're weighting all these other courses, they're cannibalizing the arts. So, either stop weighting all these things, or play fair, right? So, now we're, we're playing fair, and we're weighting more things in the arts. But my concern is, we can't be handing undergraduate medals to more than 50% of the people that walk across the stage. And right now, that regulation says a 4.0 or higher GPA, you're an honor grad. I know that the year I finished at Chantilly, I think we were 232 kids, and I believe last year they were up from that. If you continue to add these, it's, it's just going to continue. I mean, the cost of those medals is astronomical to begin with. And so, I just ask that you maybe revisit that regulation. And so, that is truly an honor grad, and not, you know, at some of our buildings, yes, I'm sure that's a smaller number in, in some than others. But it's a little hard to manage in some of our buildings. But I'm excited about the new course offerings. I think that it's great that we listen to our students. We build master schedules based on what they pick. So, just the last thing I'll say, folks, is just because something's on the menu, if a lot of people don't want that, then it doesn't make fiscal sense to offer it. So, there are some tough decisions we make every year when we build a master schedule. But I do believe that our Directors of Student Services do an excellent job of building students that are masters. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Lady. Mr. Dunn?
Well, I appreciate my colleagues' emphasis on the importance of the performing arts. I believe Ms. Marin and I led a campaign back in FY17 to make sure that the performing arts programs were not eliminated under a previous superintendent. So, I, I do want to differ, though. I, I really value foreign language classes, although they can get small sometimes. Oh, I know, I know. So, I, one thing in looking at this, being a new school board member, I, I heard a statement that, you know, it's driven by student interest. And I, I know that there's been previous discussions at school board meetings about trying to standardize the curriculum across high schools, because there is a vast disparity in the availability and accessibility of programs, as Ms. Marin said. You know, there are concentrations in certain areas, and other parts of the county, there are almost deserts of, you know, career and technical education or other course offerings. But I, I do want to urge, you know, to the, well, I, let me ask. I don't get a sense that this course catalog, that any strategic decisions are being made in this course catalog. Now, maybe I'm wrong, but it seems if it's being driven by student interest, and we have this inequity, then, and, and given, you know, finite budget resources, all these special electives and things cost money. And, and it's hard to do a million electives well. So, I was wondering, is there any strategic effort or planning or thinking about going through this set of, you know, electives, and printing it down to a more manageable number, where we can be excellent at a smaller number, and then ensure equitable access across, across the full geography of our county?
I think that, thank you, Mr. Dunn. I think that with 25 comprehensive high schools and a variety of other high school programming, we, we have a lot of students with very unique hopes and dreams, right? And I think that our core curriculum is quite, I think, equitably distributed across the county. Our core math, English, writing, science, and so forth. I think we're, you know, with the exceptions of IB versus AP versus dual enrollment and so forth, I do think that there has to be a space for students to do that exploration, to connect that passion with their purpose, because that's going to become the stepping stone into life after Fairfax County Public Schools. So, I think that we can provide supports that are still fiscally responsible and meet the needs of a very diverse set of interests among our students. And that's requiring us to be strategic. I think some of the topics before you this evening are around granting extra credit, and then also looking at AP human geography, for example, or AP seminar. I think looking at the dual enrollment options in front of us this evening, there's been a high interest in data science as being a course that's more accessible across the county, and that's one that wouldn't require a lot of financial setup, because you're, to your point, currently, we're not able to provide, for example, auto mechanics or welding everywhere, because of the startup equipment costs, right? But for a data science course, and a lot of our cybersecurity, our drone and aviation startups, those don't require quite as much financial startup. So, I think we're going to always have a tension between the financial efficiency and nurturing the unique hopes and dreams of each and every one of our students. And hopefully, we'll strike that balance better than we currently are, I guess.
And thank you for, for your comments. I, I guess I'm not just thinking about the additions that are proposed in this motion, but the course catalog writ large, because the course catalog and the locations of all these different programs reflects decades of kind of one-offs, right? We have three grades, six through eight middle schools in Mason District, and none elsewhere. And that reflects initiative that was started and then stopped.
I'd like to focus the conversation on the mission at hand, as opposed to things that we might pick up in a work session. This specific catalog.
Yes, so that was an analogy. So, in, in the same sense, if, if we're adding things, then maybe we should also be subtracting things. And, and looking at, because, you know, someone who's enthusiastic about aviation might have access in Chantilly or somewhere else, but not the rest of the county. So, is it worth investing in that one course for those local kids when we're not doing it universally? So, I, I would just ask some, some thought be given going forward to, what can we remove so that we can do all, you know, do a smaller number of things better?
So, Mr. Dunn, I think that is an absolutely, I mean, that's the classic registration strategy, right? I think our Directors of Student Services and our counseling and academic advising staff know that if students are moving to take, for example, a data science course, then they're not in somebody else's course, right? So, there's sort of a natural attrition that occurs school by school, because we, we don't keep adding courses unless we're adding students, right? So, it's a redistribution of students into different electives. So, to your point, we would not continue to support or fund courses that students are not going to continue to be interested in. And those are such hard decisions, right? Because particularly in languages, we want to keep the ability to progress through AP or IB or a fourth year to take, you know, to have an opportunity to access the biliteracy certificate as well. But you make a really good point. And I think we, every year, I think there are students and families disappointed that we don't offer a particular course at a particular school, because perhaps students have moved into a, a different space. I think we have some thinking to do about how we deliver content as we move into our 2030 plan, and I wonder about other modalities to deliver some content that enables it to be accessed across the county in different ways. And I know our team's exploring a number of options.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Dunn. Mr. Moon?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I want to start out by saying that I support a school system offering courses to meet the students' needs. And students' needs may be different from one school to another. And, you know, individual schools would be in a best position to make those determinations for their students. Having said that, let me also ask a clarifying question. The amount of resources, amount of staffing you provide to each school is determined by number of students and demographic of the student body, as opposed to number of courses they offer, number of different electives they offer. Am I not correct?
The, um, the, the resources provided to schools are directly related to the number of students enrolled. There are also many of our campuses that have special programs at their site, which also have differentiated resource allocation models. For example, a comprehensive services site that would be at a school would have a different resource allocation. The number of career and technical education courses may also have a different resource allocation. But in general, the overarching resource decision-making is around the enrollment or projected enrollment for that school site.
Okay, thank you. I think I sent this question earlier today, for you to be prepared. I was looking at a Regulation 3202, Point 12, which generally governs the process of this, a course offer, the decision-making on the course offerings. And, and school boards, role of the school seems to be coming at the very, very end. It's basically either you approve or you don't approve. Is there a way for the school board to be able to participate in an all-year phase than waiting until the very end of the process?
So, and I appreciated you providing that question earlier. I, even in the state I came from, there were finite, like, global responsibilities of the board, but setting the course of studies was one of them, right, as it is in Virginia. And so, I think that approval is critically important, because you set the North Star, really, curriculum-wise, course of studies-wise, for every student in the county. I hear what you're saying, and when I reviewed the regulation, it's not clear to me where that could happen by policy, I guess. But certainly, I think if a board member had ideas about a course they would like to see offered, it, it would seem appropriate to share that with me, or with Dr. Presidio, or, you know, having a discussion about that, because I know that we have a September, there's a timeline for program review and implementation, because I was really excited about ballet last spring, and then I was told it was too late for this year. So, I had to come back around this year in September. But I think we could contemplate what that could look like. And I didn't have time today, but I would, with your indulgence, perhaps sit down with Dr. Presidio, and Dr. Ponce, and Dr. King, and the team, and think about what a flow chart could look like, so that if, as a board member, you would know, this is where we could enter that conversation, or how to provide, you know, those ideas. that conversation or how to provide, you know, those ideas. So I think that's a fair question, and I don't think it's clear today how that happens, but we could get, we could make that clear.
Doctor, welcome the effort you'll be making with Dr. Presidio. And share with the rest of the board, whole board, what the timeline would like, you know, would look like and where a board members or board could participate in providing, you know, a more input from all your states than waiting until the last minute.
Yes, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Moon. Dr. Anderson?
Thank you. Firstly, I do want to thank whomever was responsible for moving this off of consent. I wasn't sure if it's, was Ms. St. John Cunnion. Thank you for that, so that we can engage in this very helpful, I'm sorry, I don't know who moved it, whoever, or Ms. Marin, whoever pulled it. Thank you. Because I think this conversation is very worth, is very much worthwhile, because this is something that's also not as explicitly understandable by the public. So I think we're doing some education here, which is very helpful. But for my own edification, I wanted to follow up on something that Ms. Lady had mentioned because it's one of my questions, which is, how do these courses become offered to the schools? What I thought I heard you say is that the DSS decide which ones are offered in the menu? Or, once it's here and the board has approved it, will every high school then place it on their menu? And it doesn't have to be you to answer it, but I know you have the expertise, which is why I'm looking at you.
So as a point of clarification, is I don't think this is universal.
Ms. Lady, would you like to accept?
Yes, I would like to accept that.
All right. You may use Dr. Anderson's time.
Wait, nope, don't use my time.
That's how it works.
Then staff can answer. Then staff can answer, because they don't use my time.
So, thank you, Dr. Anderson. Dr. Presidio, do you have, because I heard the term instructional council, and I'm not entirely sure. So do you have a?
Yes, I'll jump in here, if you don't mind.
Thank you, Ms. Clemenco.
That's okay. Good evening, everyone. Yes, Ms. Lady talked about the instructional council. So often, what happens is schools go to their instructional council and they look at what's new to the offerings, and they vote, and then they put forward a form to instructional services saying, we'd like to offer these additional offerings. And for the most part, we just approve, but it just kind of lets us know which schools are adding these new courses. And it could be one of the courses you're approving tonight or something else from the catalog that they want to add. So they aren't required to add everything, but they have to take into consideration, like who would staff it, if student interest is there, all of the different things. So, no, it is not a guarantee that all of these courses would be on, in every catalog this coming year.
And who comprises the instructional council?
So I, you know, I don't, don't think that's in regulation, but typically, it would be department leads, it would be administration. I would guess there's likely students, I'm looking for head shakes, students that also would participate in that process, because it's really looking, you can look at things in, you know, isolation, but they really have to look at the totality of the catalog to see what kind of offerings they have and how they could support future growth if it happens to be something that has multiple years to it.
Sure. And I could certainly, the folks that you've named that comprise this decision-making body, I certainly know they would have great input, great insight in terms of what they can support from an instructional perspective, et cetera. But I do worry about the student interest piece. How is that gathered without actually some conversations with the students? Which brings us to the space where, in the schools that I represent, there is often the perception, whether it be real or perceived, it exists, that there are better things going on elsewhere that are not offered at those schools. That would be a space that I would like to, I'd like to remove that narrative, or at least that perception, which is why I'm leaning very much into some of the comments that Mr. Dunn had made. How do we ensure that that student voice is available? And again, if you have a few students on the panel, how are they representing potentially 2,500 students to really bring something that could be of interest?
Yeah, and I can't speak to what each school does, of course, but I think it's, I think that's a valid question. What we're, when we start to move into Goal Four of the strategic plan, access and opportunity is a main component of that, and part of that is the elective coursework. So I think it's going to bring up a lot of these questions as we look across the schools and how these decisions are being made and what this looks like from a student perspective, not only from the adult perspective. So I think there's a lot more to come on this.
As some of this work is not as structured, I invite you to maybe have those conversations. How can we structure this kind of opportunity so that the student voice is not lost? Because that's where we have the, that's where we have the perception start to be built with the students and then their parents. How do we invite them into these kinds of conversations? Because access is a real issue. Speaking of access, one of the things you talked about when Ms. Lady had discussed guitar is that if we offer it, then we have to find a way to service it, so it doesn't become a burden to our students. I also invite you to perhaps do an audit on this measure, because we have schools where, you know, I have a school where there's three trombones between them, and I talked to you about that, and they're passing around the little mouthpiece because they don't have enough equipment. I know guitar here at Luther Jackson is also a problem. And I don't think what you are, what you've articulated here is necessarily what is taking place. And before I leap into any other areas, I would like to, first of all, find out what does exist, rather than relying on anecdotal information.
Thank you, Dr. Anderson.
May I be added to a go-back, because I have one more question?
Sure. Ms. Dixit?
So, I'm very pleased to see the data science DE course. This was, I know it's high in demand. In fact, in the job market, data is, science is really in demand. So hopefully, that's going to be, so my question was actually in the same line that how many schools in FCPS high schools will be offered this course?
The data science course specifically. Dr. Presidio?
I'll jump in again. At this point, we don't know. Tonight, you have to approve it, and then schools will go through the process, and they will submit forms to us to let them, let us know that they're going to be adding it to their course catalog. So they have not disclosed that information to us at this point.
Okay. So first, we have to find out if schools select, then find a teacher for that, right? And then students will sign up?
So, yeah, yes, the data science class, yes. They will go through consideration, right? They'll look at their whole, all of their course offerings in mathematics, and they'll determine if they're going to add it. If they don't add it this year, because perhaps they're not prepared, it will be there for them to add into the future. It's not a one-time opportunity.
So one, the reason I'm asking is if this added to the academies, it becomes harder than for access and reach. But if they go to the base school, it becomes easier for students to, you know, sign up. So for my own son's experience, I've seen the academies, DEs, they really kind of have that, you know, sometimes offered, not offered, the class gets canceled. So anything offered in high school, their base schools, I think that'd be really, really welcome offering. I also wanted to comment on AP Human Geography, which is now, as students can take, and ninth and 10th graders can take that as an AP course. I think that's a huge, for our higher achieving students, taking AP in ninth grade, I think will be very welcoming. I know there are a lot of students are ready for it. I'm not saying all, but there's a lot. And they would benefit by getting started to the AP, their journey a little bit earlier. So, yeah, there's some really good courses here, so I think it was a very thoughtful analysis and decision. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Dixit. And for those of you who are like, I wonder if we'll get a lesson in parliamentary procedure tonight? I've got one for you. So I was incorrect. I apologize, Dr. Anderson. You are able to ask another board member a question, but when the other board member responds, they're not using your time, they're using their own time. So they would be taken off the queue and have to come back as a go-back. So I was mistaken in the order in which I was doing it. So they're not taking your time, they're taking their own time.
So you denied Ms. Lady your answer?
I did. And I apologize to Ms. Lady as well. But, Ms. Dixit just spoke. Ms. Seismarheiser?
I wasn't finished.
It's just a deliberately slow way of talking tonight. There we go. We knew what you were trying to say, Mr. Fresh. Very mindful. So, Dr. Reed, thank you for this, and I really appreciate, and, you know, I really appreciate what you've done here tonight. And I really appreciate what you talked about with the arts. I know I keep sending you articles about the cognitive benefits, the social-emotional benefits, the teamwork-collaboration benefits. I mean, it's, I think I even sent you an article about arts versus math from MIT, and, right? So I'm really supportive, especially with, and I think I've talked to you also about the inequities it creates for students and how much it costs to access arts outside of schools. So I appreciate that. I also really appreciate the folks on data science. Ms. Dixon and I have talked about that, and I actually met with the professor from George Mason several years ago about this. So as we see data science in being embedded in more and more of our careers across a variety of disciplines, having that base knowledge is becoming more of a core knowledge, honestly. But one of the questions I wanted to ask of you, and in terms of hearing some of my colleagues talk about how can we give you input on this in a, you know, earlier way or in a way that's not at a work session, which I appreciate, I wanted to remember, I remember that a few years ago, Dr. Presidio, I'm sure you remember, Ms. Tolan and I, who was on the board previously, brought a program review forum topic, that was a four-part program review that had started with reviewing sort of what we have and where it's offered, and we'd had a couple work sessions on it. And then we paused that work, because we were in the process of hiring you, Dr. Reed, and the strategic plan, and thought it seemed silly to continue the work of looking at how to have more consistency in programming until we had finished that work. So I'm wondering if this is a good time to sort of restart that forum topic or embed this in perhaps some of the work you talk about in our goal report or on your strategic plan reports? It feels like there's a place in a work session this could be embedded, somewhere that we could sort of just hear, I imagine, as part of the work on course-taking patterns and on some of the work in achieving some of the goals of the strategic plan, because I know there's equitable access to programming as part of our strategic plan goals, that this is something you'd be looking at. So I guess the question I'd have is, do you think this is, at this point, a worthwhile to meet a bug our chair and vice chair about restarting that program review work, a forum topic, and tying it to sort of what you're thinking around the strategic plan as a way to sort of get to some of what my colleagues are asking for, for a more robust conversation about programming in general?
So, thank you, Ms. Seismarheiser. And actually, we have started working with our high school principals on this exact topic. We began the conversation really last spring, and then in earnest, and actually in August, we began the conversation at the senior level in the spring, and then with our High School Principal Association in August. And our high school principals have actually had a presentation in terms of doing what we're referring to as looking at the academic intensity of our high school course-taking patterns. And my direction to the high school principals is that all schools need to be involved in that within two years. So schools could choose to start this year or start next year, but by next year, all 25 schools needed to be involved in the project. And I believe we have 21 of the 25 involved in this year. So I'm very excited about that work, and I think we, I would welcome the opportunity. I know Dr. Presidio, Dr. Ponce, and Dr. King are leading that work as a group of chiefs with Marcy Neil's department. And I think it would be a great work session topic. I know our high school principals have another session coming up here before the winter break, but we're really hoping to impact registration in the schools in year one for this upcoming registration season. So I think it's timely, and I'm certainly willing to, you know, meet with the chair and vice chair to talk about when we might schedule that.
Okay, well, thank you. And I'll also talk to our chair and vice chair about whether we need to redo the forum topic or just pick up where we left off, because the board had voted to pause it while we waited to onboard you and all the things. So it may just be something that we could look at restarting, and that would be a great venue and vehicle to have that conversation. So, thank you for that, I appreciate it. Thank you for this, and I really appreciate it more than you know.
Thank you, Ms. Seismarheiser. Ms. Sawant?
So I got a little excited and got ahead of myself last board meeting, but I really do appreciate the weights that we're adding to courses as well, because the reality for students when they will be picking courses in just a couple months is, okay, I have to take all of these core classes, I have to take these graduation requirements, and I'm really interested in that class, but does it really fit in my schedule if I could fit in another AP or another honors course as compared to something they're interested in? So I appreciate, especially for Teachers for Tomorrow, because they do this whole presentation throughout the entire year, of having that weightage of, you know, that matters, as well as pre-professional theater, ballet, things I've mentioned before. I also appreciate that it's added to some of like the cyber and the IT courses as well. You know, when we promote the Course Era IT courses and the extracurricular activities and everything else, having classes with extra honored wages on top of APCS and other things is important as well. I guess one question that I had was for the two things that are going to be additions to the graduation requirement, AP Human Geography and AP Seminar. I know that teachers, at least for the new courses we're adding, or like schools, will get to choose whether they add that course to the specific courses that they'll be adding for the students that year. But for the graduation requirements, is that each school will get to pick if they offer that course as a graduation requirement, or it'll just become a requirement for like a standard diploma or an IB diploma? Or like, what would the process be for that if the board were to approve it?
No, great question, Ms. Sawant. And I'm going to lean on my ISD, phone a friend here, and I'm not going to name which one.
No, happy to address that one. Actually, I'm glad you brought that up, because this is a kind of a unique situation, right? It's two different courses. One we're adding, one we're adding is a ninth grade, as was pointed, I think, by Ms. Dixit, is a kind of a new situation, offering ninth grade. And then one replacing English 10, potentially, or substituting, right? So these are very significant changes to our course catalog. We have expressed to our AP schools that it is expected for these to go into their catalog. It is expected that, now, it doesn't mean they'll have enough class, and we said if they had any issues, because these are, we can't make these standard course offerings because of IB schools. We get it, it's very challenging in that way. So they are optional, but what we have expressed to, to the school leaders is that, that we expect them, so that would give the students, all the students, a chance to, to voice their interest through that registration process. So we are expecting them to go into the catalogs unless there's some unique circumstances, and we'll work with those schools individually. Does that help?
Yeah, thank you, Ms. Clemenco. I'm going to also add, Ms. Sawant, that another AP course that I think is very appropriate for ninth grade is AP Environmental Science, and I'll continue to advocate for that. It's a, it's a science course that I think is extraordinarily timely and also doesn't have any type of a math prerequisite requirement and is really taken in the ninth grade in many high schools around the country. So I know our Instructional Services Department, that's a topic that'll be coming up next year, but I think that the opportunity to try these courses in that ninth grade year, which, again, occurs in many places around the country and around the world, and schools will, I think, really enhance choices for our students.
Yeah, I agree. I think it's really exciting to see these courses as well, but as several board members have mentioned, I think it'll be interesting to see, like, if we pass all these courses, which schools will accept these courses, and then how much interest students will express in that to offer those courses.
Thank you, Ms. Sawant. Ms. Lady, for a go-back?
Thank you. I just wanted to inform my colleagues, because I don't think it's been explicitly said, that we have a large, large number of standard course offerings that must be offered in every school. We have electives that are standard course offerings. Art I, Art II, digital art, there's a lot of what are electives that are standard that must be offered. And then there are optional electives. The optional electives are the ones that, school by school, they could submit a request to add to their catalog. And for example, most of us who are Directors of Student Services have a student advisory council, an advisory council of student services with students on them. And that's often the place where we would say, hey, these are new optional courses that have just been approved by the school board. What do you think the interest is of your student body? And we might run it past leadership. So there is student engagement around what we might add as optional. But I just want people to understand that the majority of what we offer is standard, which is what we're doing with guitar. We're moving it from optional to standard, so every school must offer guitar next year. It's a standard course offering, it's not a choice. It's standard. I just want to make that. And then I fully support AP Environmental Science for our ninth graders, so I hope that that does come to fruition a year from now. And the only other question I have is the fact that I get the AP Seminar thing, but as somebody who came from a school with AP Seminar, when it wasn't English 10 honors, it was not an English course, so I'm just, my question is, if a student takes AP Seminar as a 10th grader, are they prepared for AP research?
I think that's a great question, Ms. Lady. I ask- ISD friends?
I'm not sure. Are they prepared for what? I'm sorry, to do the research?
To do the research portion, because they normally spend all of AP Research, AP Seminar, learning how to read primary search articles. It's, it's very different than English 10 honors, so that's where I'm confused.
Right. So there's a couple of things. We are required to ensure that we are teaching all of the grade 10 standards of learning, so that needs to be clear. And we're working with three schools right now who are piloting, so we can ensure what that looks like. We do believe that the course is accessible by 10th graders and that we can, you know, create, I'll say that marriage between the seminar course and the 10th grade SOLs, English SOLs, and we're working with schools to finalize that this year.
Yeah, I totally agree. 10th graders can do it. I just want to make sure that those who want to go on to research will be prepared for that.
Yes, I understand. You want to ensure that year two is a success.
Right, thanks.
Thank you, Ms. Lady. Dr. Anderson?
Yes, thank you. My last question was regarding the weighting. Where can I find criteria that gives us the information in terms of how is it decided that certain courses will have the additional .5?
So, there was an original process when grade weighting came in, and since that time, in Regulation 3202, which was referred to earlier, states the process that we go through. So like, schools or central office, or perhaps in the future, school board members could put forward courses and put forward a case for why it deserves a .5 or a 1.0 weight, which then comes through a process that comes through Instructional Services, and if it feels valid, then it goes to the committee that reviews all the new courses as well. So it's part of that same process that we use. And we have some rubrics that could certainly be shared. I can't remember if they're linked in the reg, I don't think they are, but we have some rubrics that the committee uses to see if, if they would qualify. For example, for a 1.0 weight, a lot of times we're looking for an external exam, so that we kind of keep it in, with parity, with AP and IB. With honors, you're looking for things that are above a standard level. So we have a rubric. I'd be happy to share with you.
Okay, thank you. I would appreciate that.
Thank you, Dr. Anderson. Seeing to others, we will go to a vote. If we could put the motion on the screen, please? All those in favor of the motion on the screen, Ms. Marin, Ms. Dixitt, Mr. McElveen, Dr. Anderson, Ms. Anderson, Ms. Seismoreheiser, Mr. Dunn, Mr. Moon, Ms. Lady, Ms. St. John Cunning, Mr. McDaniel, and myself. That is unanimous, the motion carries. All right. Agenda item 6.01, Learning Environment and Relationships with Students, EL 10 Monitoring Report. Each year, the school board assesses the superintendent in part on the basis of the school division's reasonable progress towards achieving the 2023-2030 Strategic Plan's goals and adherence to a set of 13 executive limitations found on pages 14 through 31 of the board's Strategic Governance Manual. The superintendent provides an annual monitoring report to the board for each executive limitation. The board then votes on whether the provided report is in compliance or if corrective action is needed. I call on Dr. Reed for a monitoring report on Executive Limitation 10, Learning Environment and Relationships with Students.
Good evening, Chairman Frisch, members of the board and the public. And tonight, I'll be presenting Executive Limitation Number 10, The Learning Environment and Relationships with Students. So this executive limitation, I want to remind the board and those watching, is really around a learning environment that's safe, respectful, non-discriminatory, and conducive to high student achievement and well-being for each student. At the time of this report, again, I want to note that, to the best of my knowledge, information and belief, we've gathered information and evidence that I believe supports compliance with the board's executive limitation associated with this topic, and so I'd like to share some of the highlights. There are nine areas of Executive Limitation 10, and they're all shown on the slide here. During tonight's presentation, I'll be focusing on any new work, updates, or items newly added to this executive limitation since last we presented it. Also want to remind those watching from home that the full report is also posted to board docs. So the first area of this executive limitation is focused on maintaining a climate that's characterized by support and encouragement for high student achievement across all demographic groups and to identify barriers and solutions to inclusion and participation. And I want to highlight in this slide our work around the Universal Design for Learning, which we began last spring, the spring of 2024. During last spring, we had sessions that focused in specifically on our August Staff Development Day, as well as our Leadership Kickoff had multiple sessions. It was designed around Universal Design for Learning, and the breakout sessions were in large part Universal Design for Learning sessions. We also held our first annual, or not our first, but I think it's actually the second, Dr. King, annual, our second annual Equity Symposium last summer, and the majority of this year's participants reported that the content from this summer Equity Symposium was relevant to their work and their role in FCPS and likely, again, to attend next year. So a lot of excitement, and I think those are really high data points. Anytime you have over 90% of staff who are coming to voluntarily attending a summer professional development program, seeing those relevance, I think that's very solid data, and appreciate Dr. King and her team. Next, I'd like to talk a little bit about the least restrictive environment adjustments we've made to the IEP process. I want to say that honestly, we've started out and continued to refine this process as we've rolled it out due to feedback from families and staff. During the second semester of last year, our LRE tool was launched. IEP teams used this tool as they considered the appropriate setting for students to receive their services. To date, over 4,800 staff members have been trained on the use of this tool. Additionally, we've put together an LRE dashboard, which is being developed to monitor this data as we look at state indicators. This is going to provide important data to allow our central office and school-based leaders to understand data and make actionable change as we work to reach our VDOE targets. Next, I want to mention, closing out this particular area, two items. First, during this school year, and we've planned this for a number of years, but during the school year, we have pilots at all levels in K-12 to expand the development of executive functioning skills for our students. By that, I mean elementary, middle, and high. Finally, we're working with a consultant to support our inclusion efforts this year, and throughout this work, we're planning a three-year, we're in the process of developing a three-year plan to improve our inclusive practices. We are creating a professional development plan that will continue for universal design for learning and inclusive practices. And the work with our consultant, Julie Costin, is providing guidance on revisions to existing instructional framework, our existing instructional framework that aligns with more inclusive The second area of this EL focuses on implementing policies and procedures that promote a safe, welcoming, inclusive, accessible, and equitable learning environment for all students that promotes a respectful sense of belonging and well-being. Again, our Chief Equity Office provides division-wide professional development that enhances knowledge and practices related to our educational equity policy. And one of the things that we really have spent a significant amount of time, again, under Dr. King's leadership, is ensuring that each and every school has two certified restorative justice facilitators. That work is ongoing, and that training enables us to provide that program division-wide. And I think to Mr. Dunn's point earlier in the evening, can we, I think the point was, can we identify some practices that are research-based that all students across the county can benefit from? And I really applaud Dr. King and the team and Dr. Ponce for working with our principals to make sure that this is an expectation in all of our schools. And again, as I mentioned last year, one of the realities was when we had so few trained facilitators, we occasionally would have a student that needed to wait six weeks. By that time, some of our elementary students didn't remember what they did, you know, last week, much less six weeks ago, so the practice really wasn't able to be as effective. So it's really, we're, I hope this year, going to see some strong data benefit to that work being rolled out. Next, in this area of Executive Limitation 10, our social-emotional learning team has developed a year's worth of content for responsive advisory meetings that were included in the Advisory Overview Scope and Sequence provided to all middle and high schools. Be curious, Ms. Sawant, what you think about those, because I'm not sure I've had a chance to be in classes where those are discussed. Also, our Title IX Office has established a procedure for working with school-based administrators to report sex-based misconduct cases into a collective and division-wide database called Guardian. Previously, those reports went to the office but weren't necessarily archived for allow, to allow us to look at data patterns. And now with our new system, the Guardian system, we're able to look at patterns and intervene, I think, in real time. For indicator three of this executive limitation, again, in summer of 2024, our Chief Equity Office implemented mandatory training for school-based administrators and introduced our new tool, which was the Let's Talk Discrimination and Harassment Reporting Tool. And for those of you who were on the prior board, this was an initiative Ms. Bararo-Mesh was very persistent about, and really credit her for supporting this work. And I know that, again, Dr. King and her team, we spent a lot of time making this a tool that would be easily accessible for our students, and to make sure that we were able to track these incidents where they occur across the county, and again, to be able to provide resources and support in areas where those patterns might be greater than others. Also, in the summer of 2024, all school-based administrators were required to attend training to ensure consistency and fidelity of implementation enforcement of the SRNR, hearings office procedures, and the new Title IX federal regulation. A makeup session for new administrators and those who could not attend in the summer was held just last month. And I do need to say, this was kind of a first. We haven't required principals to do this in the past, or actually required school-based administrators, which would be assistant principals as well. But we really believe that one of the key roles of our central office team is to engineer success for our school-based staff, and one way to do that is to make sure everyone has the requisite training so that we can best support each and every one of our students. Finally, we have additional training to support positive behavior interventions and create inclusive classrooms throughout 24-25 school year, including, again, courses for school-based administrators and teachers. I'll also say that this power of inclusion is really important. I had a chance to meet with administrators for our CSS programs and our focus on twice exceptional students, and just making sure that we are cognizant that we have students that need to be able to access advanced programming at their, at the school in which they're attending. We're also going to be, of course, looking at other options on a continuum of services for our students. The fourth area of this executive limitation is promoting structures to engage students in providing input into their learning experiences. So again, this year, I want to highlight our Student Experience Survey, which we're launching. I know we've sent out a pilot survey with questions, and we're going to be reviewing that. I believe that's Marcy Neal's office. And our Chief Equity Office has conducted a number of focus groups with students regarding the SRNR and our new cell phone policy. So we're getting quite a lot of feedback from students. Additionally, there are focus groups with staff, students, and families around this pilot, and, oh my goodness, this, 30 of our middle and high schools have already been part of this, these focus groups, and we'll be sharing that information with the board as well as the community. We could have done a focus group of middle school students at the Middle School Cross-Country Meet, because they had a lot to share about their cell phone experiences. So next is about ensuring that each and every student and their family receive regular feedback on their progress, and that this is, this feedback's appropriate and effective communication. As part of the Virginia Literacy Act, beginning this year, actually, school, students in grades kindergarten through three who are identified as high-risk on the Virginia Assessment of Language and Literacy Skills Screener, or the VALS, have to have a student reading plan. And this is going to be, I think, really interesting as we roll that out and support our young readers. We've also made changes in secondary grading practices, and as the board knows, certainly we're looking at some consistency across all schools on that topic. The next topic is engaging with teachers, administrators, students, and families in the development of administrative student discipline regulations that are clear, consistent, fair, and developmentally appropriate. We had a team that worked intentionally last year, I think we're on the next slide, thank you. We had a team that worked intentionally last year to reduce discipline disproportionality. There were data sets, walkthroughs, consults, and I think this is a topic we're still working on our next goal report. You'll see data where there's some mixed, honestly, mixed review on this, but the work is going to continue, because discipline disproportionality is something that's important for us to address. Schools received guidance and resources, and again, we're looking at evidence-based strategies to reduce these discipline disparities. I will say, when we do look at our next goal report, the sheer number of suspensions are quite minimal for a division our size, so I do want to say, overall, our students are, I think, very engaged in what they're doing with us each and every day. We're now looking at ways that we can ensure all discipline policies and procedures are clearly communicated. I think we're on the next slide. Thank you. We've included updates to Language and Regulations 2601 and 2602, which impact the SRNR, and we continue our work to ensure that discipline policies are clearly communicated and enforced. We've broadened our training materials, offered ongoing office hours, and made modifications to our student information systems. Next, I just want to take a moment and talk a little bit about our multi-tiered Systems of Support work. We had our very first summit on this topic this past summer and hosted close to 1,000 employees, over 890. It included an attendance panel to champion positive attendance practices. We also looked at in-person flexible instruction time and a new early warning system to allow schools to identify students in need of intervention. So we've really created a number of different data dashboards. In fact, our schools, Gotham Sethi's team has done a fabulous job of creating school principal bytes. So once a week, they receive data that they have asked for, and maybe a little data that I think might be helpful for them to look at, that they receive weekly, and it's based on their school context, and I think that that's really exciting to have that at their fingertips. Lastly, I want to share that this is the first year where division-wide common assessments in mathematics, reading, and science will be used in all elementary grades at the unit level. At middle and high school levels, the division-wide common assessments are going to be used in select courses in reading, math, science at designated schools. Again, Dr. Ponce, Dr. King, and Dr. Presidio in consult with Marcy's team are working on that, and the data sets from that will enable us to intervene in real time to make those academic gains that we're committed to making. In the final area of this executive limitation, we have some evidence of how we ensure that all confidential student information is properly used and protected. And as of November 6, we've had 96.7% of our full-time employees complete our cybersecurity awareness training, which is new this year. We haven't required cybersecurity training previously. So at this time, Mr. Chairman, this concludes the summary of the Monitoring Report for Executive Limitation 10, Learning Environment and Relationship with Students. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Reed. At this time, I now invite board members to ask any clarifying questions or provide their comments. We'll get started with Dr. Anderson.
Thank you. I'd like to start with the first indicator, with some of the information regarding the equity, the Equity Symposium. It's really good to see that the interest continues to increase and attendance continues to increase across the years. and attendance continues to increase across the years. And I think this is a very valuable tool. Can you speak a little bit more definitively? What is it that we're looking to have happen from participation in that work?
In the Equity Symposium work? I think what we really want our staff, students, and families to understand that equitable access and opportunity is critical for each and every one of our students. And there are many ways that barriers manifest themselves to students and their ability to learn. One of the barriers that we've not spent as much time on in the last several years here in Fairfax County is the barrier of program definition, which is to say, there, in some ways, students who are receiving special services have not, we haven't had as free a flow from self-contained classrooms into non-self-contained classrooms. And that work to support success for students in general education classes is really important. And for many of our students, it is an inequity to not have access to courses that they can be successful in and want that experience in that course. So I think that as we recognize that as a significant equity issue and having it be front and center in the Equity Symposium is to say that just as there are barriers for students perhaps who are still learning English as a language and as an academic language, so too, there are barriers for students who have required special programming. And I think when you think about equity, we haven't always thought about all of the students and all of the possible barriers. So I think the work is really powerful. And we're excited that, you know, that staff are leaning into that at this time.
Sure. So how are you evaluating the impact of this powerful work? Where are we seeing changes in activity, changes in student access that you can speak to for this indicator?
So Goal 2, that's coming up, and I'll pull up the report here. Goal 2 has where we are, a graph on our, I think we linked to it, Marcy. But we had, we have a graph in Goal 2 that looks at the state targets for least restrictive environment, the percentage of students or the percentage of time students are, I'm trying to think here. It's the target, the percentage of time students are able to be in general education courses. And there are, I think, four categories of a breakdown in that. And we've yet to meet that target, quite honestly. We're closer this year, you'll see, in the Goal 2 target than we were previously, so we're making progress, but we're not there yet. I think with more staff being confident and comfortable with universal design for learning, because that's really a general education initiative. It's not a special education initiative that I think we're going to see more students able to access the general ed setting. And therefore, we'll be able to hit those state targets for least restrictive environment that we have yet to hit, quite honestly.
Okay. Thank you. Another question that I have in this area, where you started talking about the LRE tool, which began in the last school year. The number of staff who've completed the training went up to 46-43 as of July 2024. And again, my question is, since we've had such a high number of staff that have concluded it, this work, concluded the training of work that started last school year, what are we seeing with the usage? Are we seeing increased access to not just the tool, but also increased access to our students? Where is that information, where can that information be found?
Absolutely, we've seen an increase. I believe, again, it's connected in Goal 2, where we have the charts for the increase in the LRE, the least restrictive environment. And I think if I pull up this particular report, I'm trying to see where we might have linked to it. Ms. Neal, do you have a notion of which page we might have linked to that on?
Dr. Reed, Goal 2 report hasn't been posted yet publicly.
Oh, of course not. So, um, so we didn't link to it. So we did not link to that data, so...
And that's kind of my struggle throughout the document because we have lots of activities that are out, that are laid out, lots of professional development.
Right.
And all of those are necessary activities.
Right.
But PD is a means to an end. It's not the end itself. And I don't have that information here in order to evaluate the impact
Right.
of those activities on students because that's our bread and butter. We could do 1,000 things,
Right.
but what we're interested in is changing and moving the needle on the student outcome. And that seems to be largely missing here.
So, well, on page three of the actual report, again, we talk about data regarding the percent of students included in the general education setting for 80% or more of the school day will be monitored. Do you have the data from Goal 2 that I could share this evening?
I do. I can pull that up if you'd like.
Okay. Let's go ahead and pull that up right now so I can share that. And again, these are the, there are four indicators, 5A, 5B, 6A, and 6B on the state reporting tool. But we'll get those numbers here in a second.
Sure. But that, that's just like one example of kind of what I find happening in this document. It's not, it's not inclusive of the data that we need to evaluate the progress. And I know one of the things that was approved not too long ago by Mr. McElveen and Ms. Marin is that we would have the data embedded in these reports because the purpose of these reports, as I understand it, and perhaps I need to clarify my own expectations, is that, one, we would be informed of the activities of the division. I think that's a splendid way to know what's going on. But secondly, and to me most importantly, is to determine the progress of our student outcomes because that serves as the evaluation for you.
Correct.
And not having that information really leaves me at a place where I'm not able to make determinations as to whether or not you're making that progress.
Right. Fair point.
I'll stop right here for now.
All right. What is it, Ms. Neal?
Sure. So what I'm going to share is the VDOE data is, the last time they made this report public for the indicator data is with the school year 22-23. And so we've applied the VDOE process to give an estimate of what our indicator data looks like for 23-24. So for indicator 5A, that's looking at the extent to which our students in grades kindergarten through age 21 are included for 80% or more of the instructional day in a general education classroom. And we are estimating that we'll be at 58.91%, which is an increase from 22-23 from 56.94. Again, that, the state target for the school year would be 73.1, so we're making progress. For indicator 5B, we've remained relatively flat. This is a indicator that's looking at the extent to which students with an IEP in grades kindergarten through age 21 are included for less than 40% of the instructional day in a general education setting. And so we are estimating to be at about 12%. It was just under 12% the year prior, so we're pretty flat for 5B. For our 6C data, this, or sorry, 6A data, this is looking at inclusive pre-K. Last year, that was, or sorry, 22-23 school year, the state reported we were just over 20%. And we have gone up to 23.99%. So we're just below the state indicator there. We've made significant progress. And for 6B, this is, again, we've sort of stayed flat. We're trying to get down below 38%. We're at 57.92, but that was an improvement from the prior year.
I appreciate it, but I can't keep up with the rattling of all that data.
Yes, ma'am. Yep.
And I just, I can't keep up with that. I will continue to use the rest of my time because I did have another question. This is on page five of the report, where we were talking about the trend facilitators that are available at the schools. And again, I appreciate that work. Can you speak to what you're seeing at the school? You talked a little bit earlier regarding the lag time for students to have access to RJ. What is it now?
So I will defer to Dr. King. On the time, I know we've certainly increased the number of trainers that we have. So, Dr. King?
Yes, thank you, Dr. Reed. So prior to this effort, we had five facilitators that took care of RJ for the entire county. Now that we have at least one, the goal with having two at all of our schools, it's in real time. So when there's conflict, those facilitators can intervene with families who wish to participate in RJ in real time. So we're seeing an increase in number of students, and that will be part of, you know, our report that we give to the board each year to show you the data. But anecdotally, and speaking with my team, there's been an increase in families choosing to use the RJ path when there's conflict in school.
I think I heard the buzzer.
Yeah, I think, so it's safe to say we went from perhaps months to real time.
Absolutely.
So we went from five facilitators to about?
So we have 200 schools, so we have at least 200 facilitators and with the goal of having 400. And our central office facilitators take care of the larger grievances, ones that need, you know, more expertise.
I've run out of time.
Thank you, Dr. King and Dr. Anderson. Mr. McElveen?
Thank you. I wanted to briefly discuss the cellphone policy, which was extolled in this as a example of engaging students. In my humble opinion, it's an example of actually not including student feedback. And I think that's both the fault of this board and the fault of staff. This board will remember that we began a pilot, which was supposed to just be for a few schools in our budget process last year with really no community input whatsoever. It came at the last minute. We moved forward with it. I voted for it. And then later on, that pilot was expanded pretty greatly, again, without any student input. And I'd also add that it was expanded without any board member input. And as one board member, it's hard to contain my incredible frustration with the rollout of this policy. So I just have one question, is that, and that is, when is the board going to actually have any input on this policy?
Well, I think for sure when the new students rights responsibility process begins, and I can't recall when that's calendared, but it would be this spring. Or I would assume there could be a request to have a, have the topic be on a work session and have more input on the policy at that point.
Okay. Well, as one board member, I raise up the request right now, and I will continue to raise it up, that this board be actively involved in the implementation of this policy. And I think, just, again, speaking with students, this is one of their greatest frustrations. So I don't think it should really be reflected in this as an example of positive student engagement.
Thank you, Mr. McElveen. Ms. Seismarheiser?
Thank you, and I appreciate the report, and I appreciate the additions to some of the information that's in there about UDL and about the LRE tool. I wanted to ask, on the indicator five and six data that I think, I appreciate, Ms. Neal, you're reading out loud kind of the changes, but are, is that data the same? Are we collecting the same data report to the state in each year? Because I didn't know how the impact of the LRE tool is. Are we, are we, is the LRE tool in terms of, it's a tool for IEP teams, right, to discuss LRE? But is that data being used instead of what we use to report for indicator five? Or is it still the same IEP data that was reported? So it's the same apples to apples is what I'm trying to get to. Okay, thank you. I appreciate that. I'm just looking at the nodding head, so...
Well, and let me also clarify, because I appreciate you asking that. I think the tool, there's a reporting tool we have to report, you know, to VDOE. The actual LRE document that now is required as part of the IEP process, I don't believe we began that till last spring. So I don't know that we're going to, we haven't really seen the full impact of that. So I don't think, and I don't think it'll be, I don't think our current data that Ms. Neal shared is reflective of the impact of that. What we wanted to share in the report is that's a new development that we began, and we refined it, right? Because we had feedback that it was onerous and that it really wasn't maybe hitting the mark. And we wanted to have that be a conversation in each and every IEP. But I don't think we're going to see that impact. But we, the tool that we have to report is the same tool. But we're also assuming that we're following the state protocol because it, the state, so we gave that our effort. Dr. Presidio, is there anything you want to add to that? I see you're nodding.
No, I mean, you've got it 100% correct. And I would just say, we're still looking to even refine the tool, to be totally honest with you. I mean, we're working with the consultants that we mentioned in this report, and that's one of the things that we're looking at. But I think Dr. Reed's point that the data don't reflect the use of the tool because we're looking a year behind with the data that we get from the state. It's always a year behind. So that's one of the reasons that we're trying to create our own dashboard so that we've got a better system to see the impact in real time of the changes that we're making.
That makes sense. I appreciate, and I just wanted to bring this a cautionary tale because I was on the committee about 10 years ago that revised IEPs. Maybe it was, I might be the date wrong, and it changed what we use to report. And so I want to make sure if we're going to be, and I didn't realize that part that happened after my input on the IEP. So I wanted to make sure, we continue in apples-to-apples comparison because the tool, from my understanding, is just a tool for IEP teams to use to make, it's almost like a checklist, to make sure they're considering the least restrictive environment. So it's almost like a reminder to say, yes, I've considered it. It's not a reporting tool.
We're talking about two different tools.
The LRE tool.
Right.
Yeah, the LRE tool that you're talking about and the IEPs is more, I mean, and I can just read it from what it's, it says here on the report, the IEP teams use as they consider the appropriate setting for students.
Yes, ma'am.
So it's more like a checklist kind of tool, which is appreciated. But I'm just going to lift my one point back up is that until we look at the settings that are available
Right.
and the way that programs are, and I know you're working on that with our consultant, but like it's, I don't anticipate you're going to see a ton of impact from this because they're only considering the settings that have been in place for 30-something years. So I just wanted to, right, it's great, and I'm glad we have a checklist because it's something I asked for 10 years ago for IEP teams. So it's great we have it, but just, just keep in mind that it may not be the panacea you consider until we really look at that program delivery model.
Well, for sure, and I agree because, I mean, the checklist is only as good as the environment, environmental possibilities for a child's placement, right? Because if the checklist is there, but there aren't options, then it's, right, yeah, yes, ma'am, I understand.
So I just wanted to, you know, I appreciate that you're including it, and it's a good development. And I really appreciate working on the inclusion. That was what I was going to ask you about in slide six. You mentioned working with Dr. Costin and Dr. Preddy Fonchak, and I'm trying to butcher her last name. her last name. Are they looking at that program delivery models, and they're looking at the inclusion work? Is that part of that inclusion work?
The program models certainly are, and the allocation of resources, including staffing, are very much so.
That's my next question.
Part of that work. And the other thing that we want to make sure we're tying together is the enhancement plan. So they're reviewing the enhancement plan, as well as our LRE goals, to make sure that all of that is brought together and that they're not separate projects, because really, it's all one project.
So the reason I asked that is because the enhancement plan came out of the AIL report, and the AIL report was looking at how we could better do what we're already doing.
Right.
So the enhancement plan is a response to how can we do better what we're already doing. Important to address.
Right.
Right? And I looked at the bullets here about the inclusive work. There was nothing here about actually looking at program delivery. It talks about inclusive practices, professional development, and instructional framework and resources. But so I, that's why I wanted to, I don't, maybe that's embedded in there, but it wasn't listed in the bullets. And again, if we don't change what the options are, we're only able to fix what we're already doing. And I know people are working real hard, teachers are working real hard, but we've got to give them better environments to teach in.
Yes, ma'am. And I think that your point is, one is a compliance exercise, and another is a vision exercise, right? So I think that's not lost on us. And I think the ability to flesh out that vision, it's not unlike we talked about in the strategic plan, right? We're gonna, if we just go at that as a problem-solving exercise, we'll never run out of problems, and it's exhausting. And if we come at it as a future preferred state, I believe we're gonna be able to hit the mark. So, point taken.
I'll take a go back. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Seismarheiser. Mr. Dunn.
I have a few questions. So there was a lot of effort given to training 1,000 people plus on UDL, but it isn't clear how that's aligned with the strategic plan. I was looking at the strategic plan, it said mention universal design for learning, and then, you know, you train 1,000 people, but that's a process, right? And I'm just wondering, is there an outcome, like some measurable efficacy that we've achieved through that training? Because one day for 1,000-plus employees, there's a lot of staff time, and there's a cost involved in that. So I wonder if you could just provide additional information.
Sure. I think the universal design for learning is a general education program that's a best practice. It's used many, in many, many places, probably almost all places. And let me just sort of summarize it for, also for folks at home who may not be familiar with what that means. And as we move into winter and think about, if we think about a building that's had a massive snowstorm, I'm not suggesting we're gonna have snow this winter, but let's say there is snow, there's a difference between whether we choose to shovel the steps going into the building first, or the ramp going into the building first. You've got to shovel one or the other anyhow, and universal design for learning says you shovel the ramp, and then everyone can get in. Often, we start shoveling the steps, and then anyone who's not ambulatory, in terms of the ability to use the steps, has to wait until we get to shovel the ramp, right? So it's really important that we think about what are our teaching practices that enable students, whether they have an IEP, a 504 plan, a language challenge, how do we make sure that our practices enable and nurture success for each and every student in a classroom? It could be questioning strategies. It could be how we scaffold the work. It's really important to think about how we seat children, how, I mean, there's some really practical strategies, exit tickets, entrance tickets, right, that are not significantly more work, but they're how we do the work. And so there's huge research that talks about when you utilize a universal design, which has accessibility for all students, that indeed, student achievement rises for all students. It's also really important, and I think Ms. Klemenko could share, when we look at rolling out our literacy curriculum, we've, you know, we've drawn a line in the sand that says every child deserves instruction at grade level. Then there's time for intervention or enrichment. But we often have pulled children out for self-contained support at the very time that grade-level content's being delivered. And what we potentially create then is a curriculum disability, right? Because students haven't had access to conversations, or material, or that experience that would be at grade level. So I think that as we come around these topics as a school division, we're going to see more and more support for our students and an understanding, a deeper understanding of their, each and every one of their capacity. And so I'm excited about that. I don't think it happens overnight, since we just started it last spring and summer. But as that culture builds, I think we're gonna see, you know, student achievement rise, because there are fewer barriers for many of our students.
Are there any other major school systems, for the ninth largest, any of our peer large school systems that have successfully implemented UDL at scale?
I can't think of one off the top of my head, but I think that I can get that information for you. It's such a standard best practice that it's hard to imagine someone not. But I will make sure I get that data for you.
Is there a plan to successfully implement, beyond the one day of training that was done, is there a plan to, I mean, we have 40,000 employees, right, 30,000, 40,000 employees, I mean, to successfully deploy it to our entire teacher workforce?
I believe that is the plan. I think, I apologize if I only acknowledged one day for 1,000 people. Our entire leadership kickoff, which had more than 1,000 people, was focused on universal design for learning. Every new staff member to the school division, every new educator had universal design for learning. So it has to be more than 1,000 people we've trained by now. In fact, I think the August day was for all the teaching staff had universal design. So I apologize that the data, maybe I wasn't as accurate as I should have had. But Dr. Presidio, I think every teacher has had the opportunity already, and instructional assistant, so forth.
That's correct, and we're gonna continue to build on that. One of the things that we tried to mention in this presentation is that we're working with our consultants around our inclusive practices work, and UDL is just really the foundation of that work. And that work that we're doing is really gonna be mapped over a three-year period of time. So we're gonna continue to embed UDL principles and, as we work towards inclusion over the next three years. So what we did with all staff in August on that staff development day was really just the first step in that process.
Once they get trained, are they then left to figure it out on their own, or are there continuing resources, or is it, is embedded within instructional coaches, for example, that they can offer UDL training, you know, on a kind of a one-on-one basis or a small group basis?
Yeah, there will be support from coaches and ongoing professional development, as I mentioned. But I think Ms. Seismarheiser was mentioning earlier, like, we need to really reimagine and redesign our service delivery model for how we're supporting, not just with our students with disabilities, but our multilingual learners as well. So all of the work that we're doing around UDL is setting the foundation for that. So we're gonna continue to change our service delivery models, and as we do that, then teachers in the classroom, obviously, are going to be using these practices, and they're gonna need ongoing coaching and support to, you know, increase their efficacy in the use of those practices.
Thank you. I also noted that the expansion of restorative justice, the folks who are trained to deliver that, but is there any data available, because it's not in this report, about the efficacy of restorative justice practices as deployed within FCPS? I mean, does FCPS track whether students are happier with outcomes when you have restorative justice employed, or whether it's more successful at avoiding future fights or incidents?
So what I would say is, part of the reason we really doubled down on the expansion of restorative justice was due to, really, I can think of two seminal moments. One, we had several elementary assistant principals come and visit and say, we love this, we see such powerful outcomes for our young children, right, our elementary children, but the gap in time is too long. So that was one conversation that led Dr. King and I to sit down and say, look, if our administrative staff who are imposing discipline consequences and working with our young children see this huge value, that they're willing to say, let's make sure that we have someone in every school, we want to really pay attention to that. We want to listen to our staff when they're telling us something works. And secondly, the second seminal moment was, Ms. Sawant, I had several students come from TJ and say that this was something very important to them, that they actually had a club that did restorative justice, almost students to student, and they felt like this was such a powerful way to build culture and climate and understand empathy, even not for all situations, but for many situations. And they really encouraged us to make this a broader structure for secondary students. So again, we talked, went with Dr. King's Office of Student Conduct and visited with the students and tried to design something that would better support discipline outcomes. So I think we, those are examples of both student voice and staff voice that, again, perhaps anecdotal, but I think we've seen, I hope we've seen some benefit. Dr. King, do you feel like you have any kind of, anything to add to that?
The restorative justice department sends a report to the board, and it will have data that shows what's been happening in our schools. And I expect that we're gonna see an increase in numbers based on last year and this year, because of the number of facilitators that we have in schools. But anecdotally, again, we're hearing positive feedback from the facilitators, that they've been able to intervene in many incidents, particularly at the elementary school level, to change student behavior and how they disagree with one another.
I think, you know, with students coming back from COVID, and now we're back a few years, right, I think some of those early conflict resolution skills, the self-regulation skills, how to talk about things that are upsetting, all of those, we hope will build those rich, a rich foundation in the elementary before our students get to secondary.
Thank you. I wanted to emphasize, the seventh criterion says that ensure all discipline policies and procedures are clearly communicated and enforced fairly consistently, and so on. And it seems the report focuses on disproportionality, but, I mean, the words are enforced consistently. And I can only speak from what my constituents bring to me, which is that they still feel like there's too many fights, too much bad stuff happening in the hallways, and too much violence. And so people are concerned, especially at the middle and high school levels. And so we do want to reduce disproportionality, but we also need to make sure that there's consistent enforcement of the rules. And so I just ask that there be quantitative data developed, so that, you know, we can share with our constituents, showing, you know, a decline in incidence of violence, or bullying, or other, other things, because anecdotal is not as persuasive as, you know, we have great quantitative data in so many respects. I would love to have that as well.
So, Mr. Dunn, I appreciate that, because we have to have discipline, right? There's no morale without discipline. You can't teach a child whose attention you don't have, guaranteed. If you recall our Healthy Youth Survey, we actually had a decrease in a number of those risky behaviors, with the exception, as you recall, of the sixth grade, right? But other, the bullying and the other behaviors, we saw a decrease in year over year with that one grade exception. So perhaps that would be something, what I'll do is I'll put that back in the Friday letter this week to redraw us back to that. Secondly, part of this report is we've worked very hard with our, remember I said, it's the first year we've required school-based administrators to attend a training around consistent enforcement of the SRNR across the school division, as well as hearing office protocols. And knock on wood, but we have not had student discipline hearing to the board in a while, right? So I think that's both anecdotal and, I think, quantitative, because I feel like our staff across the board are providing a much more consistent enforcement and understanding of our policy direction. So I really, I really believe that staff are working hard for that consistency in ways we haven't previously.
I'll take a go back.
Thank you, Mr. Dunn. Ms. Dixit.
I forgot about my turn. I was like, it's not coming. All right. So my only point here is, I was gonna say is, one of the number five point is the criteria, I guess, is ensure all the family gets their regular feedback on student progress through appropriate effective communication. That really happens in elementary school level, and with my own experience with two children in FCPS. At middle school, it starts to kind of slow down, and then high school, like, they're pretty much on their own. Yes, we have access to SIS, we can get scores, but that's pretty much it. So, and I feel like we become an outsider in some capacity, even though I was on a PTA board, and both at middle school and high school, just to stay involved. I was like, how do I get to school and, you know, do my part? So PTA was a good option. But I really feel there is a room of improvement there. So, your thoughts?
Yes, ma'am, I agree. I feel like, you know, some of that is, I know, children that come home at seventh and eighth grade seem to be less communicative sometimes about how their grades are coming. And high school students, it just depends, you know, where their interests are. But I know parent view is used heavily, but that's different, right, than seeing student work. So, you know, I, I think that we can take a look at what that might, what that might look like to have a more transparent feedback at middle and high school. I think it's easier at elementary, because often there's one teacher, right, who generally is able to, and you're bringing home snail mail packets.
Yeah.
Friday packets, and maybe we need to institute that at middle and high school. But once you have multiple teachers with different content and expectations, I think it is difficult if a student isn't bringing something home to say, look, you know, here's what we did. So it's something to think about. I will make a note and see what we can do.
So one of the, some teachers have, there's a note section in the grade book, and they would write student participating in the classroom, or they'll say, supporting their peers and helping with their, you know, in some kind of notes are there. I think that's one section where it's not extra whole process to set up. But then, some teachers do it. And seriously, I would look forward to seeing those remarks in my son's grade book, because those were like little personal touches, I would say, that somehow the teacher is giving me that feedback. It would feel much better than just getting the scores.
Are you talking about in parent view or in CIS? Or, I guess it's the same thing.
In the CIS, the same thing. So it's in CIS after the grade book, there's a comment section there, too.
Okay.
The other thing I wanted to say about the number three point, a lot of this harassment, bullying, unsafe condition is happening in our hallways, like my colleagues also suggested. And one of the requests from an elementary school principal was like, we are seeing that, especially with our sixth graders, discipline issues are happening more. I think we really need to think about putting cameras in hallways at elementary school level, and use our one-time funding for that, or any way we could do that. I think that's gonna support a lot of those concerns, because the last time you made the presentation, there was uptick in the bullying harassment in the sixth graders.
That's correct.
So I just, I'm just correlating that, and that's a request coming from elementary school principal. It kind of, kind of makes sense. So.
Yes, ma'am. We'll add, I know we've had that conversation, so I'll add that to our planning list and ask Mr. Lambert and the team to think about adding that to our safety queue.
Thank you, Dr. Reed.
Thank you, Ms. Dixit. Ms. Marin.
Yes, I think that some of these items about what you're not failing to do are really timely, especially number five, which is about access to feedback on student progress through appropriate and effective communication, which would be our reporting and our grading policy. So I look forward to looking at that one with that, with the following year's work underway by that point next year. But just, you know, reiterating that it is so important to get that right, to get the technology piece right, and I know we've been talking about that. The, number four, promoting structures to engage students in providing input into their learning experience. So last night, I was at our Advanced Academic Programs Advisory Committee, and one of the topics was, how do we collect feedback from students about why they choose the courses they do, and do we have some kind of feedback mechanism? So that is something important, I think, and would also blend into the conversation about high school courses and the selection. So regarding number two, implementing policies and procedures that promote a safe, welcoming, inclusive, accessible, and equitable learning environment for all students that promotes respect, belonging, and well-being. So we are gonna have what many of us expect to be a turbulent time in our country. I mean, this has been widely talked about, and I know that we have talked about how we're gonna go forward, and I think we do need to talk publicly about the temperature in our country. We have a trust policy that says that we will keep the confidence and safety of our students who are documented and help them. I've already been asked by constituents, what happens if a student's family is deported? Do staff know what to do? What are the steps? And I do ask that we get really clear about what happens if a child is in crisis because their family has been, you know, taken away due to immigration issues. What do teachers know how to do? How do we talk to students about this? And we're gonna need to talk about the tensions here, that it's uncharted territory in some ways, but we at least know, regarding this policy, we have a responsibility, and we're gonna need some tactical work here to make sure we can do everything we can for our students and their families.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you, Ms. Marin. Mr. Moon.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, given the hour, and also, many of my questions have been already asked by my colleagues. So I'm gonna leave me to just a couple of questions. This is something actually Ms. Marin has already asked, but I'm gonna add my voice to that about grading practices. I know this is work in progress. Since I see from one of the slides, slide number 11, that changes in the practices were adopted to increase the consistency, is that the only purpose behind changing grading policies to provide the consistencies?
No.
Okay.
So.
Is that, is that, is there a academic increase, improvement in academic achievement behind grading policy changes as well? And if so, I want to see how that's gonna be measured, whether it's, whether it's just consistency alone, or it has more. Whether it's, whether it's just consistency alone, or it has more than consistency, I wanna see when do you think we could be provided with the ultimate outcome, whether we are achieving that we wanna achieve through these policies? And also, along the way, whether we are going to be instituting any mechanism to collect the feedback from not only just the teachers, but also families and students.
So, I, to think about grading practices, I think the fundamental purpose of grading is to accurately reflect what students know and are able to do, right? I think the grading changes for this year that are one-year only, that were provided to staff, and again, a year, I would say, two years ago, it was the mandate, like this was a year ago, last year, the mandate to have one grading scale, right? So that is to make it consistent, and that was important because we had concerns about multiple grading scales across the county. I think the other clear direction that I provided was that if a student did no work, they need to, there is a zero that is posted, right, that we, it is okay to give a zero when there is nothing done. I think it's, I don't think it makes sense to give a 50% when a student has made no effort on an assignment. So we were very clear about that. That assignment could be made up and continue to work to improve the zero if they so chose. I would say that we would hope that, that many staff, I think, and also students, said that that goes to motivation, right? Like if you don't have to do anything to get a 50%, that it's not as motivating and therefore less work was being done theoretically, right? I think based on student and staff feedback. So I think that's not about consistency, but about providing the motivation to actually do the work. I think as we look at the distinction between formative and summative, it's been very inconsistent. So this year, for one year, it's 70% summative, 30% formative, and, which I think is more of a balance than the 90-10, or 80-20, or the different modalities out there. I also think that, in my opinion, and I don't know where the committee will end up, I happen to believe homework's important. And I happen to believe that if it's important, we have to provide some percentage of a grade connected to homework. Carol Dweck talks about a growth mindset, which is persistence and result. We wanna develop study skills in our students because you have to have those skills in post-secondary, or honestly, any position you take after, you know, your educational experience. So I think that there are pieces of consistency that are important. And then there's just fundamentally, how do we reinforce study skills, learning behaviors, critical thinking, problem solving, collaboration, and so forth. So hopefully we'll strike the right balance. And I also hear you very clearly about how do we gather that feedback from staff and students and families. And I think Dr. Presidio and his team have some, have done some of that work. And obviously, the board is going to be establishing a new policy, which then we'll take back to the committee to flesh out by May 1.
I don't wanna labor on this issue too long, but however, this seems to be the issue that concerns probably at this point in time, the largest number of people out there we are serving, both students and teachers and parents. With that in mind, I wanna find the way, I wanna, I wanna make sure, I wanna reassure public that we are doing our best to collect the data and also provide a mechanism through which they can provide their input. So that, I do not know whether we can ever achieve a perfect grading policy, but as we try to perfect our policy, that score, with that in mind, that we are not going to cause this turmoil to continue to forever. So it's gonna, we, because at, right now again, again, everybody, everyone seems to be in somewhat of a turmoil. They are feeling that way. And for students, rightfully or wrongfully, you know, grades are very, especially for high school kids, high school students and families, they take grades very sensitively. And, and we need to find the way to be fair to all parties concerned with this process. So I know your report is about the past, but I am trying to address, and your next report will bring all those information to us.
Yes, sir. No, that makes sense. I, I do think there's an undue, I mean, there is turmoil because it creates a record, right? And in particular, credit-bearing courses. They form a transcript, which then becomes a significant document.
Thank you, Dr. Reed.
I wanna clarify too, homework for all those watching or listening, homework effectively done is practice of previously taught material. It's not new material for homework, it's practice. So, and often collaborative teams, right, like study teams and so forth, so.
You know, Dr. Reed, just one comment. If, Mr. Chairman, if I still have time, that, you know, when I was growing up, homework also included preview. It's not just a review, but also preview. And our teachers used to tell us to read it in advance.
That's your time.
Yeah. No, that, to your, I would agree with that, the reading in advance, but it wasn't necessarily a, an assignment per se on material you hadn't had an opportunity to be instructed on.
Thank you, Mr. Moon. I'll take a turn. So I'll be voting in compliance. I think there's a lot of good in here. I do have one concern that I want to address and then work in the months ahead to, to help resolve. On page six of the monitoring report, Regulation 2603 is cited as an example of evidence supporting compliance with the second provision of EL 10, which states the superintendent shall not fail to implement policies and procedures that promote a safe, welcoming, inclusive, accessible, and equitable learning environment for all students that promotes respect, belonging, and well-being. As you mentioned in your response to another board member at last week's meeting, we heard about the 2023-24 Fairfax County Youth Survey. Though there were many examples of clear successes, there were a few troubling findings. 20% of lesbian and gay students have experienced bullying. That's more than double their heterosexual peers. In fact, this number has sadly increased the past two years after going down every year, at least going back to 2015. 52% of lesbian and gay students have experienced two weeks or more of feeling sad or hopeless in a row compared to 20% of their heterosexual peers. Meanwhile, 26% of trans students have experienced bullying, again, more than double compared to non-trans students. 63% of trans students have experienced two or more weeks of feeling sad or hopeless in a row compared to 23% of non-trans students. In the cited Regulation 2603, we have among the strongest protections and supports for transgender and gender non-conforming students in the country. And yet, what I hear time and again when I speak to trans students and their families is that they don't know about this regulation or the supports that we offer. As a superintendent in Washington State, you helped lead the state's work to address bullying in schools. I want to use this EL monitoring report to ask that you use the same creativity and focus you displayed there to work your help on behalf of the LGBTQ students who attend Fairfax County Public Schools.
Yes, sir.
Because we have great policies and great regulations, but what are we going to do to make them work for the students they are intended to help? That was kind of a rhetorical question, but I'm interested in your thoughts.
No, it's, it's critical. And I, I think, you know, I've met with our, our pride group and just, it's heartbreaking when our students are not able to feel safe in learning spaces because it's gonna impact learning as well as the mental health and the overall sense of well-being. And that's not who we are here in Fairfax County. So there is definitely work to be done, and I'm committing to make sure we do that work. I, and the data, and those specific data points that you mentioned, the data's not going in the correct direction for sure. So I think that, as we think about that, just being clear with our students, staff, and families about our commitment to that work is gonna be vital in the coming weeks and months.
And I think key among that is ensuring that all students know about these protections and the supports that we have for them, and their families know as well, because many simply do not. No matter what the conversation is outside of these buildings, many people don't know they exist. So I look forward to working with you to make that happen. And I hope you'll take some time in your school visits to meet with GSAs and talk to students directly about what they're experiencing in schools. Because frighteningly, a lot of it, when I talk to them, sounds a lot like what I experienced in high school, only a few years ago. So.
Right.
The laugh, okay, that was a bit much, but I appreciate it. All right, we'll take some go, actually, we'll go to Ms. Sawant.
Thank you. I just wanted to circle back to slide eight about the advisory lessons and kind of give the student feedback that I've gotten from kind of more of the regional groups. Overall, it looks different in classrooms because of what teachers pull from the sequence and what they teach. But kind of the main lessons that we get is like setting SMART goals, habitats for success, student advocacy, SRNR, and then for seniors and juniors, specific PSET prep, and then college prep. But I guess my question is, what is different about like this year's advisory meetings or changes that we've made as compared to what we've had in previous years? Because these kind of general trends students have seen for a couple of years. I wanted to know, like, what was new or different this year?
So, great question. So, Dr. Presidio, do you wanna clarify the new year's worth of content for responsive meetings?
Yeah, I think, I think that's a great question. I think the biggest difference is that we created a curriculum that we expect to be delivered consistently in all of the advisory classes across the school division. When we started the advisory program a number of years ago, schools were creating a lot of their own curriculum, and it would look different from school to school, or even from classroom to classroom within the schools. So we've really tried to provide a viable curriculum that touches on the social-emotional learning components, as well as the academic preparedness components that you mentioned, and the college and career planning components that you, that you mentioned as well. So those are like the three big buckets of what we wanna see happening in the advisory program. And I'd be happy to share more information with you about it, and certainly would enjoy getting more student feedback about what that experience looks like. Because this is our first year of kind of having that expectation that the curriculum would be used consistently from, from school to school.
Yeah, that makes sense. I'd love to talk more about that. Because I think when we all talk about these goals, it's probably that the curriculums that the schools are setting are similar in that we have all of these different goals. But I'd love to look at some more of the specific things that FCPS is pushing and that, kind of how that looks down the chain.
Thank you, Ms. Sawant. We'll go to go-backs. Dr. Anderson.
Thank you. I do have one question, and then I'll just make some comments. On page nine, we talked about the disciplin, this is number six of the indicators. We talked about the discipline disproportionality, the cohort training with the intention of reducing the discipline disproportionality. This work started last year. What can you give us regarding the progress of this work on that measure?
And, I apologize, are you on page?
Page nine of the full report.
Got it.
It's at the bottom there, number six.
Got it. So, we'll be providing some evidence, but I, I think that, Dr. King, do you have any kind of early data on our disproportionality work? I believe we've actually structured teams around that work in the last year. So, do we have any data to report on that?
We don't have any data to report tonight, but we can get some data. And, you know, we have new leadership in that office. We're restructuring the support that we're giving based on feedback that we receive from principals. So our team is working currently to provide new strategies for the support that we're giving schools.
Okay. Thank you. I, I know I'm a broken record on this. I have been a broken record on this, and today's no different. I, I struggle to evaluate the progress because we don't have the information. Again, there's lots of activity that's been identified, but what would be so helpful for me is for those activities to be connected to the desired outcome, and then for that to be supported by where are we now, where were we last year? I've seen glimpses of this throughout these reports, but they are not here consistently enough for me to be able to support compliance and progress. And, and I struggle with that because I know it has to exist, but if it's not provided here, I believe that I am at a disadvantage to evaluate your work. The last thing that I do wanna share is with indicator one, that talks about maintaining the, a climate for high achievement across all demographics. That's also a space where I know there's a lot of work to be done. Even in the assessment documents that were shared, that was shared earlier this year, our achievement gaps across our groups have not closed at all. So we're not seeing, I think, that climate as meaningfully as I, I would like to see. And the other thing that I also wanted to raise regarding the youth survey data, what I appreciate whatever, what it has to offer, I also wanna couch it to the fact that we are administering it to students in grades six, eight, 10, and 12.
Right.
So it's not necessarily indicative of the entirety of our student voice. Similarly to the, the comment that you made regarding the, us not seeing any appeals come to us, but that's just the appeal. I think a better data point, a better indicator, would be how many kids are at the hearings office.
Right.
Because the appeal, we know, takes a certain resource in order for parents to even access it, let alone do it.
That's your time, Dr. Anderson.
Yep.
Thank you. Mr. Dunn?
Thank you. So I wanted to just mention the Varsity Tutors Program. The data in the report shows it's not being utilized as much as, as it probably could be. So I was wondering if the assistant superintendents could be directed to reach out to principals to make an aggressive marketing push of this program? Because there are students who need it, we have it, we just need to get kids to use it. And a lot of it is probably just publicizing it, right, marketing?
Right.
And, and, and that's just something that could be done without too much effort. I'm interested in learning more. There's, there's discussion in the report about trauma-informed schools, but there's not data on, like, how many schools have trauma-informed staff? I think it tends, you know, there's certain communities that really need that. And I'm wondering if in a Friday Letter, you could provide more data on which schools have, you know, most or all of their staff trained in, in trauma-informed education, and, and if, if it's being expanded, or just kind of like, you know, there's discussion of it, but not like data about it. So I'd like to, to get that data. And finally, I just wanted to, to offer kudos because the SRNR, I think, is, on the website, is so much better than the handbook that we saw last year. It looks really good. So I just wanna compliment you on doing a really good job, working, must be the new website designers, and, but the content is just amazing. It's like night and day different. And so thank you very much for your hard work on that. I really appreciate it.
Thank you, Mr. Dunn.
Thank you, Mr. Dunn. I now call on Ms. Dixitt for a motion.
I move that the school board finds that the superintendent is in compliance with executive limitation number 10, learning environment and relationship with students. I further move that the school board approves the monitoring report based on the superintendent's reasonable interpretation of executive limitation number 10, learning environment and relationship with students as outlined in the strategic governance manual.
Is there a second? Mr. McElveen. Ms. Dixitt, would you like to speak to your motion?
No.
Mr. McElveen, would you like to speak to your second?
Uh, no, thanks.
Thank you. All right. Seeing no others, we will take a vote. The motion is on the screen. All those in favor, Ms. Maron, Ms. Dixitt, Mr. McElveen, Ms. Anderson, Ms. Seismar Heiser, Mr. Dunn, Mr. Moon, Ms. Lady, Ms. St. John Cunningham, and myself, with Mr. McDaniel away from the table. All those opposed? Dr. Anderson, abstentions? Will the clerk read the vote?
Ten-one. The motion carries.
Thank you. The motion carries. All right. At this time, the board will take a few moments to document their individual feedback on the monitoring report. School board members may complete the hard copy found at the dais or the online form linked in the meeting script. If you have any issues accessing the form, please contact the clerks. We will take about five to seven minutes. Board members, please return to your seats. Board members, please return to your seats. Agenda item 7.01, Policy Review, Learning Environment and Relationships with Students, EL 10. The next order of business is the policy review for Executive Limitation 10, Learning Environment and Relationships with Students, EL 10. Annually, the board will review each executive limitation at the time the monitoring report is provided to determine if revisions are needed. Board members may offer amendments to executive limitations at any regular meeting, provided they send final amendment language to the board and clerk at least 48 hours in advance of the meeting, at which it is to be considered. At this time, no amendments have been submitted in advance of this meeting, but board members may provide comments on Executive Limitation 10, Learning Environment, and Relationships with Students before we vote on maintaining the current language for the year ahead. If there are no further comments, or questions, or discussion, I will call on Ms. Dixit for the motion.
I move that the school board contain Executive Limitation 10, Learning Environment and Relationship with Students, as it is currently detailed in the Strategic Governance Manual.
Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. McElveen. Ms. Dixit, would you like to speak to your motion?
No.
Mr. McElveen, would you like to speak to your motion?
No.
All right. Seeing no others with their lights on, we will move to a vote. All those in favor of the motion on the screen, Ms. Marin, Ms. Dixit, Dr. Anderson, Mr. McElveen, Ms. Anderson, Mr. Dunn, Mr. Moon, Ms. St. John Cunnings, and myself, with Ms. Seismore Heiser, and Mr. McDaniel, and Ms. Lady away from the table. The motion carries. Agenda item number 8.01, Academic Matters. I call on Dr. Reed for Academic Matters.
Thank you, Chairman Frish, and it's so exciting this evening to present Academic Matters. We're going to talk a little bit about attendance tonight, and just how important that is, and the progress that we're making, and our strategies that we're utilizing here in Fairfax County. And there, on the slide, the first slide that you'll see, I think there's some really compelling data points. Several of these data points, I think, are most critical. For example, when only 17% of students who are chronically absent in both kindergarten and first grade were reading proficiently by grade 3, compared to 64% of those with good attendance. And when you think about that, something, that's not an instructional strategy, it's not a program delivery model, it's just attending school. And I think that as, it's one of the most significant ways we can partner with our families, because the difference between 17% and 64% of our students that are reading proficiently is significant. So, again, this, and the importance of attendance cannot be overstated as something that matters with academics. Another data point that I think is most compelling is that students who fail to read at grade level by the end of third grade are four times more likely than students who achieve proficiency to drop out of high school. And I think that's another compelling data point. So, as we think about attendance, and the importance of being a reader in third grade, it's not just really about that third grade performance, it's about the trajectory of their educational journey, and often economic earning capacity in later life. So, attendance is, again, just so very critical. I want to remind those at home and the board about what is chronic absenteeism. And as we look at the definitions for chronic absenteeism, I want to say that it's defined as missing 10% or more of the school year for any reason. And interestingly, this includes excused absences. So, that's really just two days a month. And so, when you think of chronic absenteeism, you don't often think of just two days a month, but that actually is what it could end up being. And so, I think that one of the things that we look at is, we've had actually a lot of excused absences as well. And I want to make sure that our families watching who have children who are medically fragile understand that we want to make sure that families make choices about their children's health and their health care. And we recognize that some children do require absences because of chronic medical conditions or concerns. So, we understand that, although there's not really, we do understand that, and the data that you're able to look at at this point really talks about from the school years prior to the pandemic, and then, of course, school years after the pandemic. So, our peak absenteeism data really was occurring right as we came back from COVID in the 21-22 school year, although I am proud to say that in each year, Fairfax County Public Schools, which is the dark blue bar graph, is continuing to be lower than the Commonwealth. And we finally are back down to 12.8%, and we're hopeful in the coming year to even go lower. But we've made significant progress, and are, again, significantly below Commonwealth data. So, we're very proud of the work that our staff and students and families were engaged in over the last year. In thinking about, we talked about in the last executive limitation, this multi-tiered system of support for academics, and this also exists for attendance. So, what we want to think about is this pyramid where Tier 1, which is where most of our students sit, often it's referred to almost 80% of our students, those are strategies that encourage good attendance. And then, when you have Tier 2, which often is determined at roughly 15%, those students may need more help and more support. And then Tier 3, which is often 5%, would be those students who require really intensive supports, maybe that have inter-agency case management plans, learning and success plans, and so forth. So, the definitions for where those sit, between 10 and 19 and 20% or more of absences, really are ways to define and identify where and how we're supporting students. Ideally, we want all students in Tier 1, if it's at all possible. As we think about our in-person flexible instruction time, this brings to mind our program last year that was so successful, our Spring Sprouts program. And as we think about what's possible, we don't want to wait till spring break this year, so we're looking at a variety of models that we hope will generate makeup time and be able to recover lost instructional time. I will say that last year, we had a significant impact from Spring Sprouts. I know the number of schools, Hybla Valley, London Town, Mount Vernon Woods, Washington Mill, Woodlawn, all saw significant improvement as a result of the program, and had a lot of positive feedback from staff and families. So, we've got a lot of work to do, and we want to make sure we utilize this So we've got a lot of work to do, and we want to make sure we utilize this option at all grade levels. So in thinking about academic matters and attendance, we wanted to share some strategies that families could participate in with regard to student attendance. We know that our families are critical partners to promote good attendance, and it's really important that children learn these habits as they're young. And in particular, our very young children are quite dependent on parents to get them to school. So our parent partnership here is very important. But these are some ideas that are research-based and trauma-informed, as well as best practice for family support around student attendance. So Chairman Frisch, that is academic matters for this evening, and we want to just promote strong attendance because of the solid impact on academic achievement. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Reed. Mr. Dunn.
Thank you. For slide number two, that displays the data on how we're doing versus Virginia, I would love in a Friday letter to get a sense of what the data is for maybe the surrounding jurisdictions, the WABE jurisdictions, and kind of our peer school systems that are in the, maybe the top 10 of the country, if that data is available. Because just to get a sense of, you know, FCPS is normally ahead of the rest of Virginia, and I'm glad to see it still is here, but how we're doing to our, you know, DMB compatriots and nationally with peer school systems would be useful to see. I assume that the data that shows the reduction from 17.1% in '22-'23 to '23-'24 is the result of the efforts that you're leading and the, you know, positive measures you're putting in place. Is that, is that correct?
Yes, sir. The staff has worked tremendously hard, and we've allocated resources to go from 17.1% to 12.8%.
And do, I mean, we're a good way into the school year now, do you, do you think that that trend will continue downward?
We expect that trend to continue downward. The slide that I referenced around the makeup time, the in-person flexible instruction, is going to be more utilized earlier in the year, but it is our expectation, because we believe the board expects us to continue doing everything we can to lower that. We'd like to get below 10%.
Great. I, I wanted to mention that slide five, and that first bullet in the box, IP Fit in Action, it may just be the way it's written, but I really hate it. The fact that it says, "Important opportunity for schools to recover lost time due to student absences." It implies that the benefit is to the, to the schools, but not necessarily to the student. And maybe that, again, that's just the way it was phrased, and it wasn't meant that way. But, you know, for the public watching, or reading at a later point, you know, I would ask if you could address, is there data showing that this program, Spring Sprouts and similar programs, actually benefits the students? Like, this recovers for schools, and schools are being held accountable by the state for chronic absenteeism, but are the students actually catching up? If they're only getting, you know, two hours of instruction, does that equal one full school day for those students? And if that is true, I wonder, how come our school days aren't shorter, right? I mean, there's a little bit of a confusing element to this slide.
Yes, sir, I understand that, and I, I don't think we can equate a day of instruction with two hours of instruction. I think that the Commonwealth has placed a significant focus on attendance, particularly in recent years, for obvious reasons, right? Our attendance is not where it should be, but your point's taken, and I'll see what we can do to identify the impact on our children.
Thank you. I mean, I guess just more broadly, if we do have children who are chronically absent, are we catching them up to grade level and literacy? I mean, do we, do we have data on that? Are we gathering data, or is that something that needs to commence?
I would, I would say that since, I would say that we need to collect data on the impact academically of Spring Sprouts. I think we collected data behaviorally, because students didn't have that week. Some students who had significant chronic absenteeism, once we can get them in that pattern, they seem to continue that behavior, right? So I think to answer your question about the academic benefits of this program, let me go back to the team and see what we can come up with for a Friday letter.
Okay, that'd be helpful. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Dunn. Dr. Anderson.
Thank you. I did too have a question regarding some of the efforts. I think it's worth noting what some of those activities have been outside of the recovery, just to really show the impact that, well, the work that's going on in the division to ensure that kids are coming to school. So can you give us a few more examples of what has taken place to impact the chronic absenteeism over the past year?
Yes, ma'am. I, I would say two of our chief officers that have done the most work on that would be Ms. Hall and Dr. Ponce. And Ms. Hall, do you want to share a couple of the strategies that we've employed to improve attendance? And Dr. Ponce, if you could elaborate on that?
Thank you, yes. Our community relations team is working directly with, with Dr. Persidio's team to communicate with our families about the importance of attendance and the benefits of attendance. In addition, they are using targeted communications to, through intercultural engagement, to our multilingual families. In addition, there is the work on the website, leading, and through Family Academy, which we've talked about before, educating families on the importance of, of attendance and the benefits of attendance. And I mentioned before, there will be work going out into the community at every turn, sharing that information. At every community engagement that Dr. Reed goes to, there's information on, on attendance.
In addition to that, we are monitoring, and we have a list of the students that are chronic absent, and talking with the principals, and at the same time, we are assigning them to after-school tutorials or hours that they can serve. And I agree, it's not that we are going to say, hey, you can be two hours, three hours, but this is the solution that we have for now.
Thank you. The other thing that I wanted to talk regarding the, you know, I-FIT time, the Spring Sprouts, and I agree with Mr. Dunn, it's not ideal.
Right.
We all know it's not ideal, otherwise we would just shorten school and call it a day. But it is an opportunity to have something rather than nothing. But it has to be clear to parents, it is a very distant second to being at the schools each and every day. It's like the lottery, you can't win it if you don't play. You have to be at school in order to engage in the learning that you need. Another piece that I know has been a little bit of a, a change in habit, particularly for our elementary parents, is how to treat the symptoms of sickness. I know during COVID, it was, if there's anything happening, you do not come to school, and you stay home. And we've since relaxed some of those mandates, but I think we need to have continuing education regarding, you know, when to really keep your child at home, and when can they come to school, even though they're not at their, you know, at 100% like my colleague here.
No, that's correct, and I do think we have tried to put out guidance, you know, not having a fever and so forth, but the degree to which students are not contagious, perhaps a sniffle is okay, whereas previously, sniffling was not as, you know, okay.
Right. And just kind of the last piece, I know very often we have families who are on vacations and visits to other countries for extended periods of time. I would also love to hear, how are we continuing that dialogue with families who, who have those kinds of commitments, and how it can be so harmful to their own children's education?
Yes, ma'am. We, I think that's important. Also, we'll just mention here, I know Mr. Frisch raised this as a concern, but our LGBTQIA+ plus community, given the disproportionate feeling of sadness, the bullying, the anxiety, that also affects attendance. And the American Pediatric Society has often talked about bullying as a public health concern. So those non-specific symptoms that families sometimes hear about, my stomach hurts, I don't feel good, our school avoidance because of those feelings of a lack of safety in the school learning space. So I think to your point again, Mr. Frisch, it's a topic we have to absolutely be addressing.
Sure. And I, actually, one more thing just came to mind when you shared, when you shared this. How much of our disciplinary, how much of the chronic absenteeism is impacted by our own disciplinary measures? For example, if a student is suspended for 10 days, that does go into this calculus, correct? So what is the impact of that?
Well, I would, who would like to tag that? Ms. Neal?
Yeah, we are pulling some of that data for our goal-to-work session.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Anderson. Ms. St. John Cunningham.
So really, I just want to compliment the work that's been done on this. I was working in the schools during COVID and right after COVID, and doing some of this work of trying to get families back in, particularly in some areas where there was loss of life. The fear of sickness and keeping kids home, I know, has an impact. Or even kids not wanting to be in school because their parent was sick, and they were scared something was going to happen to their, to their parent. So I think that, that we still see remnants of that, and that's contributing to that. In terms of Spring Sprouts, I have spoken to parents, they loved it, the kids loved it, they got a lot out of it. And I know the equation of two hours in-person flexible, or three hours in-person flexible, doesn't look like if it equates, but we have to remember that in a school day, the, the kids are also going to PE, they're going to music, they're going to art. So when they're in there for those two hours, they're not doing anything. They're doing, they're doing numeracy, or they're doing literacy. So I, I think that that slide doesn't kind of really give the full picture of what that time commitment is, because a full day is not just, you know, pure literacy and numeracy, there's other things going on. So I have every confidence that things are going to improve, but I really want to lift the work that I know people have done from going to people's homes, the late school buses, just extraordinary, extraordinary efforts from everyone in those school buildings, and not just counselors, not just principals, not just assistant principals, like everyone.
Yeah, thank you, Ms. St. John Cunningham. And I, I also think the number of excused absences, we also still have a number of family members, parents and caregivers, who are still working remotely, right? And so I think that's a phenomenon that didn't exist in the numbers prior to COVID, and does exist today. And I think it makes families more mobile in terms of being able to pick up and perhaps go somewhere for a week or two and take the family. And as educators, we're all in school, right? Like, we're, we're in the classroom, we're in the schoolhouse, or, you know. So I, I think there's some interesting adult dynamics that are connected to this attendance work, because I know we all lamented the significant number of excused absences. It's not that children are more truant than they were before, it's that, in many cases, parents are taking children somewhere. So anyhow, if you're listening, parents, it's important they're in school, so, very important.
Thank you, Ms. St. John Cunningham. Hopefully they're asleep. All right, Mr. Dunn, for a go-back.
I was just wondering if in a Friday letter, you could provide chronic absenteeism data by high school pyramid for those of us, so we can understand for our districts, you know, where there might be peaks and valleys. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, we'll do that.
Thank you, Mr. Dunn. Seeing no others, we will move along. Agenda item, excuse me, Agenda Item 8.02, Superintendent Matters. I will slowly call on Dr. Michelle Reed for Superintendent Matters. Dr. Reed.
Thank you, Chairman Frisch. I think in the interest of time, I will just limit my remarks to a heartfelt thank you to the board, to each of you, and your confidence in my leadership and the leadership of our team, and the work of our educators in this division. So I thank you for your vision, your support, your guidance, and just appreciate it, so thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Reed. Agenda Item Nine, Consent Agenda. Our adopted rules of parliamentary procedure, Robert's Rules, provide for a consent agenda listing several items for approval of the board by a single motion. Many items listed have gone through board review, and documentation has been provided to all board members and the public in advance. Items may be removed from the consent agenda at the request of any board member prior to the meeting. The consent agenda items are on the screen. Is there any objection to approving the consent agenda? Hearing and seeing no objection, the consent agenda is approved. Agenda Item Number 10, New Business. The following are new business items, there will not be a vote on these items this evening, but action is scheduled at a future meeting. Board Committee Reports, I call on, Agenda Item 11, Board Committee Reports, I call on Mr. McElveen for a report from the Audit Committee.
Audit Committee continues to work through its annual audit plan, we will be meeting again this, this coming week, and we'll have another update for you at the next meeting.
Thank you. I call on, we're off to Agenda Item 12. This is our last meeting before Thanksgiving, and as a demonstration of our gratitude to the incredible staff and our superintendent who have stayed with us all night, without objection, I would like to skip Agenda Item 12, Board Matters. Seeing and hearing none, at 11:26 PM, this meeting is adjourned. Happy Thanksgiving.